We're on.
I know, but I'm waiting for 6:30.
Oh, okay.[21.61][21.61](laughing)
You know how I am.[23.61][23.61](laughing) Do you want to hit the record button?
Recording in progress.
Good evening. Today is Wednesday, May 1st, and I'd like to call this meeting of the Lunenburg School Committee to order. We are meeting in Town Hall in the Ballada Meeting Room. It is 6:30. In accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being broadcast live over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel. If you wish to join via Zoom, the meeting ID is 865-3049-4155. This meeting is broadcast live through the local access cable channel and on the public access Facebook page, and will be found on the Lunenburg Access YouTube channel within 24 hours after the meeting. The agenda lists all topics which may be discussed at the meeting and are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair. Votes may be taken as a result of these discussions. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by the open meeting law. Please stand if you are able for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Our first topic this evening is public comments. If you have a public comment, please keep it to three minutes per comment, and comments need to address those items that are under the purview of the school committee. Is there anyone with a public comment this evening from the public? Mr. Beardmore.
Thank you. One of the topics that we're going to touch upon tonight is our school's ability to hire and retain the best possible staff that we possibly could in our school department. And I know people like to joke, "I am a townie. I was born and raised here and went to Lunenburg schools K through 12." And I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge one of those people, and in fact, his wife, who were instrumental in my education and played an enormous role in the education and careers and upbringing, really, of a generation of Lunenburg students. Don Adams died this past week. He was 96 years old. And for those of you who didn't know Mr. Adams, he was a music teacher in Lunenburg from, I believe, the mid-'60s to about the mid-'90s. And during that time, I believe he taught at every building at one time or another. I had him at TC Passios, very briefly at Turkey Hill, and at Lunenburg High School. And he was extremely demanding. He always got more out of you than you thought you had to give. And I know people today who are professional musicians who will credit Mr. Adams' encouragement and involvement and instruction for their careers, but there are also a lot more people like me who are not musicians, but may have taken an interest in music or theater or something along those lines along the way. And he grabbed by the collar and pulled into a music room and said, "You're going to do this?" And by golly, we did it. I was in two high school musicals that he directed, one of which I referred to at my appointment hearing a couple of years ago. The second one I did not audition for. I learned about it after the castings had been posted, and he cast me for the second lead, the comical buddy in Brigadoon, which was a sort of a womanizing alcoholic, so, you know, go figure. And I just, I could tell Don Adams stories for hours, but I'm limited to three minutes, so I will abide by that and acknowledge his enormous contribution to me and my peers and my generation and our town, the People United Parish, and also offer deepest sympathies to his wife, Ann Adams, who is also a career teacher in Lunenburg, who taught a generation of students chemistry and was also my chemistry teacher. So, thank you very much.
All right. Anyone else? Mrs. Brzezowski.
I want to do my, hopefully, this is my last reminder to everyone that you've got to come to Town Meeting on Saturday. It's only a few days away. We will have childcare there, so we'll have childcare there. I know it's a pain in the butt to go. I know, I'm hearing from everyone that it's, people don't want to go because it's a lot to ask people to sit through. I know. But you need to go. This is, there's very few opportunities where your vote really, really makes a difference, where you know that your vote is going to make a difference. Town Meeting is one of those, where it can come down to a few votes, and your presence can make the difference between a yes or a no. It matters if you show up or not, so we need parents to show up on Saturday. We absolutely need parents to show up. And secondly, this is a two-step process. It's going to hopefully pass at Town Meeting, and then on May 18th, I'm going to beg you again to go to the polls, May 18th, and vote yes at the ballot as well. So it is a two-step hurdle to get through, but please, please come to Town Meeting on Saturday, please.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, then we will move on to the Chair's report. My Chair's report echoes both of those sentiments. I was going to speak about Don Adams, only I did not know him as a teacher. I knew him as a colleague, as a young teacher when I was teaching in Lancaster. He was very good to me. He helped me. He was a mentor, a delightful person who I continued to work with through my career. So hats off to Don and our condolences to Ann and their family. The other thing is, go to Town Meeting. We need everybody there. Yes, there will be childcare. Yes, there will be lunches. We will approve that eventually tonight, but you can buy for $7 in cash a lovely lunch, and we will vote on allowing it to be eaten while we are deliberating. Deliberating, well, deliberating too, I suppose, but deliberating. And it is the purest form of democracy for sure, and we need to see everybody there. Okay. So that's my Chair's report. We have no minutes, I don't think. I didn't see any minutes to review. I have approved warrants between April 10th and April 29th in the amount of $328, no, And if anyone has questions about those warrants, they are to let us know, and I will move on to the Superintendent's report.
Thank you. An update today at 5:00 PM was our deadline for transportation forms. We have received 1,503 transportation forms. We are still working to secure 38 from the high school, 30 from the middle school, and two from the primary school. Turkey Hill, we have received 100%.
Oh, yeah.
Good job![599.16][599.16](laughing)
Updated numbers as of today for kindergarten, we are at 107. Just a reminder that our extended day summer program and our extended day before and after school program for next year, the registration is open for both of those programs, and our Early Learning Center registration will open Monday, May 20th. An update for the committee relative to head injuries. You are looking for a presentation. We will, we're tentatively scheduling it right now. We will have a presentation on athletic head injuries at our June 26th meeting. Dr. Ridley from the UMass Sports Med Department will be in attendance that evening to answer any questions that you may have, and we'll provide you a little bit of information ahead of that presentation as well. Just a little bit of a heads up, there are going to be some projects happening out on the roadways around town. That water main replacement on Mass Ave will be getting underway. We also have some culvert and bridge repair projects. I would like to thank our Director of the DPW, Mr. Barnard, because he is amazing with giving us some advance notice about when all of these things are going to happen so that we can advise the transportation companies appropriately and families when appropriate. But I also want to thank him so much for accommodating and scheduling work times, knowing when our buses are out on the road, both in the morning and in the afternoon. It makes a huge difference, so special shout-out for Mr. Barnard. A few reminders for May and June. Again, this Saturday at 9:00 AM, the Middle High School Auditorium is where you will find the annual Town Meeting. Yes, childcare will be provided by our National Honor Society students, as well as our students from Student Council. That service will be provided between the hours of 9:00 AM and 3:00 PM, should we need to go to 3:00 PM. And our Food Service Department will have pre-bagged lunches available, again, for $7, cash donation, and there will be a few different options, including a vegetarian option as well. May 18th is the townwide election, and as a reminder, there will be the override question on the ballot. School committee meeting, hybrid via Zoom from the Middle High School on May 22nd. May 27th, schools and school offices will be closed for the Memorial Day holiday. School committee meeting back here again in a month, June 5th, from Town Hall. That will also be a hybrid meeting. And June 7th, cross fingers, warmer than 50 degrees and no rain, high school graduation outdoors. And our last day of school is an early release, and that's June 12th.
Yeah.
So we're coming down to the end of it quickly.
Thank you.
And that's all I have for you tonight.
Thank you very much. Okay, first, now we have a student representative report. Good to see you.
Good to see you, too. For the primary school, there's a STEAM night tomorrow from 5:30 to 7:00. STEAM is Science, Technology, Engineering, Art, and Math. Turkey Elementary School is hosting that STEAM night, and there's a book fair that closes tomorrow. For Lunenburg Middle High School, the eighth grade Washington DC trip is approaching quickly. For Lunenburg High School, there's a Spain trip for April 2025. They've registered it open through June 2024. Student government elections are next week. Costa Rica trip was a success. That was April break. And prom is May 18th at Watchus Mountain.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Under new business tonight, we have rain-water retention project. Mr. Barnard.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you for coming.
You're welcome. And thank you Superintendent Barnard for your kind words. Yeah, we do try to accommodate as many people as we can.
Do good work.
We understand the importance of that, so.
We appreciate that so much.
All right, so I have a presentation I put together. I assume everybody could see it.
Yep.
Screen share.
It's behind you.
It's on the board, okay.
And you can just let me know when you're ready to go to the next slide.
Okay. If I can get it going on my computer, I'll be all set. All right, so Stormwater Demonstration Project. Let's see, we'll go to slide number two. So what is a stormwater BMP? So start with what is stormwater. So stormwater is runoff from rainfall or snow, snowmelt, and it represents the single most greatest source of water quality impairment on the rivers and lakes and waters in Massachusetts. A BMP is a best management practice. I'm not sure why they chose that name for stormwater structures, but that's what it is. We've got to live with it. A BMP is a device or an action that improves or prevents the pollution of urban runoff from stormwater. And BMPs are designed so that the post-development peak discharge rates do not exceed the pre-development discharge rates, and BMPs are designed to remove up to 80% of the average annual post-construction load of total suspended solids. So it slows down water, and it takes solids out of the water to help prevent pollution. Go to the next slide. So there's many types of stormwater BMPs. I've just listed a few here. There's structural ones, such as deep sump catch basins, oil grit separators, and sediment four-bays. There's treatment BMPs, including bio-retention areas or rain garden, and that's what I'm going to be talking about tonight a little bit. And there's, there's a whole list of others. We can go to the next slide, I guess. And there's more. There's infiltration-type BMPs, and there's other type of BMPs, and this is only a partial So why did we decide to build our demonstration BMP at the Middle High School? It's a high-traffic area for Lunenburg residents. Saturday, many residents are going to go right by the area where we're going to put it, so in the future, people will see it. It's easy to access, right? There's parking available, and it's, we're going to be putting in a rain garden. It's visually appealing, so people might take notice, saying, "Well, what is that?" And it's an opportunity for students to learn about stormwater and to participate in maintenance of the BMP. Just anecdotally, a few years back, I wasn't doing much recycling at my home, and my daughter learned about recycling at school. She came home, "Dad, why aren't we recycling?" So nowadays, we have more recycling than trash. So I think the same can apply to stormwater. The kids can bring it home and teach the parents. All right, we can move on. All right, why do we have to build a demonstration project? It's a requirement of the MS4 permit. So the MS4 permit is from the federal government, the EPA, and through the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection. The permit says we have to build one by this year. So just a little bit about that permit. That permit allows cities and towns to discharge water into waterways, into rivers and streams. If we don't comply with that permit, they wouldn't allow us to discharge, which would be impossible, or they'd be fining us. So this is something that has to get done. All right, X marks the spot. If you could see on the overhead view of where I want, where the proposed stormwater BMP is going to be installed, so right at the circle area in front of the high school. And I put in the plans that, I'm sure it's too small to see, so we can just run through the plans kind of quickly. The first one, well, we'll just go to like slide, go to slide 13, right? So I kind of blew it up, so you could see what we're proposing. So starting at the top, coming down, we're going to put in a new catch basin, which will catch the water from the parking lots and pipe it underground to the next new catch basin, and then go into that grassy area. The first portion is called a four-bay. It's basically stone, so water comes in, hits that stone, it slows the water down. A lot of the solids drop out. The next part is the rain garden part. So that's a, it's mulch on the top, so it'll look nice mulch, and there's plants that can tolerate being wet. And then there's a layer of soils that's, special soils to filter the water as it goes through. And then there's an outlet, and that'll outlet to an existing structure. So we do have to cut through the driveway in at least one or two spots, it looks like, So the next slide kind of shows what I was talking about. You can see on the left, there's a pipe, comes in, hits that four-bay where the rocks are, and then it goes, the water will go over to the bio-retentive area. There'd be plants in there. Like I said, the water will filter through. There's an under, underneath, there's a stone drain to catch that water, put it into that outlet structure, and then it'll go out to the existing structures. So like I said, it slows the water down and it filters the water. All right. So the next slide is a list of plants that we are proposing. Again, they're native plants, and they're plants that can tolerate being wet. On the next slide, I put a picture of what the plants will look like, so you can get a visual. All right, so there's river birch and sweet pepper bush, blue flag and blue, big blue stem. All right, then I'll talk about the maintenance of the BMP. So year-round, we should be inspecting it, remove any trash, anything that might be clogging it up. In the springtime, we should be replacing mulch that needs to be replaced or freshening it up a little bit. Fall or spring, we should be removing any dead vegetation. In the spring, we should replant if something has died. Spring or fall, we should be pruning, and as needed, if the special soils get filled or it's not working properly, we'd have to totally replace it. And the next one, so when will we install it? So I said no earlier than June 24th, which is after your last day, so I think we're safe there. It shouldn't take too long to complete. You know, I said like two months. I don't think it'll take that long. And we're going to be using a local contractor that we have a contract with. It does a lot of work for us, and the DPW staff will assist with it. That's what I have. Any questions or comments?
Sure. Any questions from the committee? Mr. Leighton.
Thanks. I know there's been concerns with water near the football field. Was there any consideration, or would it make sense to have it located near that area?
Yeah, I believe work needs to be done there, but again, it's a demonstration project that's supposed to be highly visible. What I didn't put in there, I forgot to put in, is we want to put a kiosk with a little explanation of what a rain garden is and how it works. So I think putting it behind the football field, not too many people will see it there.
And then my other question was, recently, we've had lots of storms with lots of water. Is there concern about having a big storm, and this could impact the way the drainage is commonly done? Could this potentially be a problem for drainage?
It shouldn't be. Again, it's designed to slow water down. It's going to hold some water there, so it should actually help with big storms.
Thank you.
Mrs. Brzezowski.
What is the MS4 permit? You mentioned that in the.
Yep, municipal separated sewer system. So again, it's the permit that allows the town to discharge water into waterways, into rivers and streams. It's administered by the DEP, but it's mandated by the EPA.
Okay, and you're required to have a rain garden somewhere in town, or what is it?
Well, any kind of BMP. We chose a rain garden because they're nice to look at, and you know, the idea is to have people see it and ask, "Oh, what is this?" Try to learn about stormwater.
Okay. Is there grant money associated with the rain garden?
There's not. I hope I'll be using my operational funds.
I thought I did. Okay, so you covered the how often maintenance. Who, and will the DPW be performing the maintenance?
Yeah, well, the hope is the schools could chip in, maybe the students, you know, part of the class.
We don't have money.
Right? Well, picking up dead vegetation, that's, you don't need money for that, right? Raking it out.
You do need time.
Yeah, I'm not going to do anything that's going to add any demands on our staff.
Because the kids, are you talking about having students do it?
Well, that's up to you, yeah, but.
We don't have staff to do it, for sure.
We don't have staff.
And kids don't have time in their schedules, so this is something we're going to have to talk about. And to buy the mulch and those kinds of things, we don't have funds.
Yeah, it looks like there's monthly inspection, remove trash. There's mulch annually, which is buying the mulch, spreading the mulch.
As, yeah, kind of as needed.
Replanting dead vegetation, replacing dead vegetation, pruning, replacing entire media and all vegetation as needed.
Yeah, so the expenses that DPW would pick up, but you know, some like just raking it out or picking up, you know, dead vegetations, I can envision the students doing that.
I can't.
Their free time? In their free time, like?
I'm not going to ask students to.
They've got classwork. I'm not, I'm not sure. I mean, if there was, is there an environmental group or something at the high school? Is there some club?
Not an environmental club at this time, I don't believe. Because there was one a number of years ago, and I think it was middle-school age students, maybe. But we haven't had that club in my tenure here.
Because the kids' schedules are very, very tight, so that's something that's going to have to be figured out, because I don't see kids picking that up.
Okay. I have this question. Does National Honor Society, they have to do community service hours?
Well, that's something that could be worked out. You know, we'd have, we'd have to ask them, but I can't promise that.
No, I understand.
I'm saying that that can't be something we promise. Mrs. Brzezowski.
You mentioned cutting into the driveway for the outlet. When was that driveway poured? When did we pave the driveway?
We are.
When the school was built, wasn't it?
Probably.
Nine years out from that, right? Well, eight school years out from that, so it was poured probably eight and a half, nine years ago.
Okay, so would you be patching?
Yes.
The driveway where it's cut into?
Absolutely.
So that's going to be degrading the, okay. And where would the outlet be going to?
An existing structure that's already out there, so we're just tying it in.
Can the existing structure handle and?
Yeah, it already is handling that flow.
Okay.
We're not adding any flow.
Okay, and another issue I had was. And another issue I had was, so a few years ago, we, every fall, we deal with the West Nile. And I remember a few years ago, we had to cancel sporting events and after-school activities that were happening in the evenings because of West Nile. This sounds like this might be a place, if it's very moist, that we might have mosquito issues. What about mosquitoes?
That is a good question. I'm actually meeting with mosquito control tomorrow. I can ask them that question.
Yeah, because I'm, I have, it doesn't happen every year, but when we do have West Nile outbreaks, it does affect students and sports and after-school activities, and to put in...
Well, the retention basin that it's going to, correct me if I'm wrong, but we're talking about a matter of less than 100 feet away.
Where does it go to?
Right. I think it goes to the other side of the parking lot.
Is it an open?
To the edge of the property, right?
Right.
Over by...
Like where you would park your car on the other, on the other side of the main drive road.
Yeah, the tennis court?
No, 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 no.
To the east or to the...
To the west.
To the west?
I believe it does.
Oh.
Because I'm, and here, the pipe goes this way.
Yeah, that's west. I believe.
North.
Oh, okay, I got it backwards.
Right, am I looking at this?
So, the retention, the existing retention point, isn't it closer to Mass Ave?
Well, maybe. I thought it went west from there. Anyway. It's not, in my mind's eye, it's not leaving the property a whole lot fast, a whole lot slower than it otherwise would. But I could be wrong, I'm a long way from an expert on this topic, but...
Is the point of this more the demonstration piece at this point than it is to do any kind of mitigating that isn't already being mitigated?
That's correct, yes.
So, okay. I took a look at these plants. I want to say no blue flag, it's poisonous. I looked it up. And two of, the trees are fine, those are great, river birches are good. The other two are invasive species. Once you plant them, they go crazy. So, we may have to look at those plants, for sure.
Yeah, we can.
In the little bit of time I had today, I found that. So, we're not mitigating a problem with this. This is like a demonstration, showpiece kind of thing.
That's correct.
Okay, any, yes, Mr. Beardmore?
So, conceptually, I buy into this 100%. I'm all in on education. I'm all in on giving students in particular, but the general public, an idea of what stormwater maintenance is all about. As you know, I sit on the capital planning committee, where I'm a normal irritation to you. But, but, you know, in this case, one of the areas that I'm particularly irritated about is our inability to, to plan for the massive drainage and stormwater issues that we have around town. And that's no, no criticism of you, Bill. You're new, this is, these are longstanding, these are longstanding issues. And this is exactly the right thing, in my view, to be doing, to educate our people about ideally how to keep stormwater off the roads and someplace else where it could be used more constructively. I do have, you know, some general thoughts, like for example, when I first started hearing about this, I was thinking like, you know, retention barrels and that kind of thing, something that was a little bit more visible. Not necessarily as aesthetically pleasing, but more visible. In this case, if I were just somebody walking by after this project were complete, would I even know that this thing is there other than a kiosk that says that it's there? Like, would it, would it occur to me that we're doing anything in this, what was, you know, currently just a grass space? That we're doing something different there, other than maybe adding some vegetation and beautifying a little bit?
Well, I think the rain garden's our best chance of people saying, hey, what is this? Because you love the first forbay with the rocks, and then this mulched area with these plants. You know, and the outlet structure, that's probably the best chance of catching somebody's eye.
Okay. Has this been, like, you obviously have some fairly well-thought-out plans. Has this been, is this, was this done by like a landscape design architect? Like, who planned this thing, I guess?
I should have mentioned it. It was designed by our stormwater consultant. It's CEI Comprehensive Environmental Incorporated. Yeah, so they're professional engineers.
Somebody who knows what they're doing.
Yeah, specialized in stormwater.
And then, I do, I do think we got to work through the maintenance issues. I'm a little bit concerned about that, but, and by the way, I want our schools to be a partner to the DPW. And as much back and forth as we can, and I think that we can figure out the maintenance if, if we put our minds to it. It might take a little more discussion than tonight's meeting. One area that I do have some concern about, though, is if we're going to go through the effort of putting in this vegetation, I've never thought to look, do we pile up a lot of snow in that area currently in the winter? Or does it go someplace else? Because if it does go there, then is that something we need to be thoughtful about?
I don't know. That'd be a question for your staff.
Well, we may have the perfect lead in here. Mr. Heavy, what are your thoughts on this? Perfect segue, couldn't have done it better myself.
It's nothing wrong.
I didn't agree.
Eric Heavy, Director of Facilities and Grounds for the school. We do pile snow in that area. We put it wherever we can when we get significant snow. My thought, one of my thoughts was, could we use the area down by, in front of Brooks Building? Because that's already got a drainage catch basin there. Would that be a good location for it? Because it is right there on Massachusetts Ave, and as people come in, they are able to see it. And when they drive by up and down, they may be able to, you know, they'll see it. My understanding, too, is that area, from what I heard, sometimes is used by the students going out during class. They'll go out and sit, sit out on the grass, and that's a nice flat area for them. How often they use it, I don't know, but I've heard that that is an area that they do go to. But I think, you know, my question would be, can that area in Brooks Building be a location as well versus right there in the middle?
All right, so two questions. First about the snow, I don't see why we couldn't continue to pile snow there. I don't think it's going to harm it. It's actually probably a good idea, it's going to drain through there anyway. And could we move the location? Possibly. Again, it's probably not the most visible, you know, there's not too much foot traffic there. People will see it, but are they going to park and then walk down to it?
I think there's a benefit to the visibility of the location. Like, I'm generally amenable to the location, just so long as it's well thought out. But, and I would like to get, I would like to get the principal's opinion, too, because that, you know, we, we do run programs there, you know, like, you know, and the only time that I ever see a lot of foot traffic on that patch is during homecoming.
Homecoming.
Yeah.
You know, and I think we can probably accommodate that, so...
So, during fire drills, do students muster out there on that area? Is that a gathering spot for students? And how else do students utilize it? That's a big area, when I look at the aerial photo, when I look at that space and compare it to, you know, a wing of the building, that's a pretty sizable chunk of real estate. So, I guess I would want, I would want the principal's input and to know how students use the area. Do they go out and have classes, Jared? Do they meet there? Do parents pick up kids from there? That kind of thing. It's, it's a pretty sizable space.
But it's not like it's not going to be usable, right? Like, you're still going to be able to walk across it, sit on it.
But if it's a garden, you can't, it's not the same kind of use with the, if it's a garden.
Is garden?
I think most of it.
No, there won't be plants everywhere, so you could walk around the plants. It'd be mulch. Potentially could be wet if it's raining.
It's not going to be an open field. It's, it's, we're going to vegetate that area, basically.
Right.
Right. Mr. Schoolenbrini?
So, I don't have a question, I have more of a comment. If the students organically embrace the idea of maintenance, that would be wonderful. My concern is that the town is expecting, at least in some small measure, students to do maintenance. And like, I don't have any issue with my kid getting out there with a rake. But I do have an issue with the town expecting people to have their children do that. We wouldn't do this for garbage pickup. We wouldn't do this for patching the blacktop. I'm not sure the expectation for volunteerism is a good thing. No one wants to be chosen as a volunteer, and it just seems awkward, right? Like, if, if the police department came and said, there's a guy who's locked up in the holding cell, and we're looking for people to watch him for a little bit. Like, obviously, that's way more dangerous, that requires very specialized skill set. But like, the expectation of volunteerism seems like a bad idea.
Okay, so when you say the town, it's more just me, it was more just my thought?
Sure.
No, I was thinking, like I said, community service hours might be a good project.
And that's something that could be talked about, but... I think we have a few questions. Is there any other questions for Mr. Bernard this evening? Yes.
Was there a date that this needs to get done by for it to satisfy the state requirements?
It's actually June 30th of this year.
I would need some sort of assurance that the cost of this is not going to fall on us.
It's not.
And that it's going to be maintained by the DPW in perpetuity, and that we're not going to end up with a dead garden that becomes our responsibility.
I, what I would like to do is, we have some questions for the principal of the building. I'd like to hear more from Mr. Heavy after he has a chance to take a look at this. And then I would suggest that we take a vote on this at our May 22 meeting.
I would also agree, too, the invasive species, I'm a little cautious about that as well.
Yeah, that, that blue grass thing you see all over the place, it goes like crazy. So, so, you know, the choice of the plants and stuff. You know, I think we can work something out, but I think we have questions. And, and we need to have them answered before we can take a vote.
All right, fair enough.
Okay. All right, anybody else with a question? Is that okay with everybody?
I like the blue flag.
The, oh, Mr. Heavy?
Just one more question. You may have said it, but I don't recall. How deep is this going to be for water? If water does get retained in there, roughly how deep will that be?
Does it show it on here? I think it's only a few inches, potentially. I don't, it's not really to scale. There may only be a few inches, and it'll probably drain through that the same day or the next day.
Okay, so all, everything underneath will be saturated? And the hope is to just have a couple of inches through the grass?
Right, well, there won't be grass, it'll be mulch.
Mulch, okay. All right, thank you.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Bill.
I'll see you maybe 22nd, right?
Yep, on the 22nd, and I'm sure we can come up with something.
All right.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay. Next would be extended day and early learning center handbooks.
And Mrs. Gillette is with us this evening on the meeting virtually? So, I didn't get a chance to look at this. Can we put this off until, this didn't hit the box till 5:30? Can we put this off till next meeting?
That's a possibility, there are very few changes in it.
Changes are the highlighted yellow.
If you skim, the highlighted yellow are the changes. Why don't we have Mrs. Gillette talk about the changes? And then if you're not comfortable with it, we'll put it off. Does that make sense?
Okay.
Oh, we can't hear you.
All right, thank you, hi. We do not have any changes really this year. What we have done is just changed the calendar, following the school calendar, what the holidays would be, the school cancellations due to professional development. That's really all the changes we have this year. It's pretty much, there's no fee increase, the hours are the same, the policies are the same. And that's for ELC as well as extended day and the summer camp.
Okay, do we want to vote on the...
I just have a question that is really directed to the superintendent. And I ask because the policy refers to payments. Last night at the select board meeting, the select board approved a new or updated revenue turnover policy, which, my understanding, having not read the policy, but it was discussed at the meeting, refers to standards whereby if we receive a check, we need to turn it over to deposit to the finance office within a certain period of time. And I believe it was amended a couple of times during the processes they looked at. Were you consulted on that? They described that it had gone by the departments for, for commentary. And I, my thinking is, first of all, do we know what that is? And then, second of all, do we know that whatever we're doing here is in compliance with the town policy?
So, Mrs. Peterson is also on the call, and she has had a lot of communication back and forth with Town Hall and the finance office. We have recently started having weekly meetings with the finance director from Town Hall. When we had our meeting last week, I could be wrong, Mrs. Peterson, jump in and correct me if I'm wrong, but I do believe that that's where we learned of, of the new practice, that they are, they are looking for us as one of the departments in town to, to implement. It, it's, my understanding is it's just going to impact the frequency with which our staff have to go up to Town Hall from all of our buildings. Mrs. Peterson, do I have that right?
Yes, that's correct. It will impact the frequency. Right now, I'll give you an example. There are safes in every school. Sometimes if there's field trip safe, for an example, the teachers and the secretaries will keep the money for that field trip for a week or two, to be able to collect as much as they can, and then go and make the deposit at Town Hall. That will now change, it will be done weekly. So, that's, that's the most major change in the policy. And Town Hall did send us the policy to review.
Okay. My, my request for future scenarios where this is to occur, we share a number of services with the town. But when you... But when you look at the way our services as a school department are calculated by the state and what we are ultimately responsible for, it becomes a little bit ambiguous when, for example, part of the total, uh, cost associated with per pupil spending, some of that is a portion of the spending that is done here for accounting and finance. And we are ultimately responsible for our own financial policies. And I don't believe that that responsibility ends when it, when the check crosses the threshold of Town Hall. I could be wrong about that. I'm not an attorney. But I believe that to be true. And there's lots of discussion in town about further combining services for efficiency sake, which conceptually, I am fully in support of. However, from a practical matter, I am not ceding authority to anybody for anything. And so, when a policy is arrived at that requires commentary or consent by the school department, I think that that should come to the school committee before such time as it is imposed upon us by the Select Board or any other town entity.
I thought we were just approving her handbook.
Well, we are, but this is referring to payment. And I'm asking, how is this payment handled? And that policy changed last night. It was imposed upon us last night.
But it would not be inflict, in, in, have anything to do with the handbook.
No, I, well, well, it, it could if we adapted the handbook to...
But that's not what she's asking us to do. She's asking us to approve it as...
Approve the handbook. But comments are, I can see where, where it was a tangent comment.
For example, it may make sense to only take payments for one particular week in the month, such that we're not incurring additional burdens in terms of revenue turnover, right? I mean, these are things that could have been considered.
Had we known.
Had we known. Anyway, I, I'm perfectly happy to approve this. I'm, I've made my point.
Yep.
How do the payments work now?
In regards to our program?
Yes.
So, the, the payments, we send out the bills. They go out electronically as well as everyone gets a paper copy. And they get it the middle of the month, and it's due the first of every month. We then make a deposit to the bank, um, once to twice, depending on the number of checks we get into the bank, and then do all the, um, appropriate paperwork and deposit everything up to, um, Town Hall. We get a lot of our payments through WebTrack. That is becoming more and more common now. Most parents will pay online, and we're getting less and less checks. But it is always due the first of the month unless that falls on a weekend or a holiday.
So, in general, if it's due on the first of the month, how long would you have to hold checks before it would make sense? Does the once a week make sense with you?
We deposit, so, we, we can change the way we deposit. Right now, if it's the first of the month, we will make the deposit that afternoon or the next day. We send everything up to Town Hall then. We don't, we don't hold on to anything.
So, this policy does not create a big change for you?
No, we, I mean, no. And as I said, it's less and less checks each month
True.
because of the, uh, you know, it's easier for parents to go online and pay.
Hello?
Okay. The difference here as compared to our school buildings, our school buildings have safes. And that's where the money is held until they're ready to take it for deposit. Um, the impact with this policy change is really going to be, um, more of an impact at the school level because the secretaries will have to be, um,
Going back and forth.
Coming up more frequently.
Yeah.
Which is unfortunate because we had to
Busy enough.
cut some...
Mm-hmm, correct.
Great.
Again, I'm not even, I, I think the policy probably makes good sense. And I also believe that it may be largely imposed upon the town by Department of Local Services. Like, it, you know, it, it's more, I, I think we need to go through the appropriate reviews.
Okay. All right, so, um, Mrs. Prusowski, are you comfortable?
I'm good.
Yeah, okay.
And thank you for picking some typos.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I know it's pedantic. I just...
Okay, so then, um, is there any other discussion on the handbooks? Can I have a motion to approve the handbooks, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the handbooks.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All righty. You're all set?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Patty.
Okay, next. Annual Town Meeting Food in the Auditorium. Now, we had been extremely clear, we didn't want food in the auditorium. But this is going to turn into a bumper crop of a meeting, perhaps. So, um...
Couldn't you say they can only have food if they vote yes?
No, we cannot.
Oh, well, if it passes. Not if individual vote yes, but if it doesn't pass, you don't get lunch.
I don't think that's gonna work. So, good try. Um, so, Dr. Burnham, you have a menu here?
I do, courtesy of Nadine Lorenzen, our Food Service Director. Um, so, there will be, uh, choices of the bagged lunch. Again, these are not made to order. They are prepared ahead of time. There would be a turkey and cheese on marble rye or subroll available. Ham salami and cheese on a subroll. Hummus and veggies with pita bread. And all three of those offerings would come with a bag of chips, water, and cookies.
That's a bargain for seven bucks.
For seven dollars.
Can we reserve it ahead of time? Because I want the marble rye and...
So, this would require a change to our policy. Um, I would, I would also, or a waiver for the day, or whatever we want to call it. I would also say that if someone has allergies, they would bring something they could eat that would be permissible, even if it's not the bagged lunch bought.
Knowing that we have challenges with our custodial staffing, we're just looking to, um, mitigate, uh, any substantial cleaning of food from, um, from the auditorium that day.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you to Nadine for putting this together. This is extra work. So, thank you for her, for the effort.
And she will be there taking your seven dollars.
Nadine's feeding democracy. That's the way it is.
Yep.
So, are there, is there any other discussion, Mr. Leighton?
Will facilities be able to set up some trash barrels in the vicinity to...
That's a good point.
Yeah, I'm sure that we can have some out in the, uh, out in the hallway. I don't, I don't know if, we could talk about it, but I don't know that we want it inside the auditorium?
Maybe in the doorway or something.
Maybe just outside the door.
Just outside the doorway.
Yeah, just outside. I would also ask that if, if we could make a request of moderator to make a few suggestions about keeping trash clean up and disposing of
Yep.
trash and that kind of thing. I would move that we, uh, suspend the food and drink policy for the auditorium for Town Meeting.
On May 4th.
I will second that.
Well, if it goes super long, it could...
Oh, Jesus.
On May 4th.
Eat it.
If it's on May 5th, you don't get food after that.
We're starving you out.
Nobody's getting food after midnight.
Peter, I can't believe you said that.
Nobody's getting food.
I've been there on Monday night.
That's the other thing I need to mention. They will be available for sale between the hours of 11 and 1.
But we're, this is for Town Meeting, not for food sale.
The lunches are available between 11 and...
No, but the suspension of the policy is for Town Meeting.
Where, where will they be?
Um, since they are planning for overflow locations, the gymnasium is going to be an overflow location for the meeting should there be, uh, in excess of 600 attendees.
Clickers.
Um, the, the cafeteria is also going to be set up as an overflow location. In both of those locations, um, PAC will be streaming live, and there will be audio in both of those locations in, in the event that anybody needs to, to move to the next, uh, area. Therefore, um, I think our best option, uh, is going to be to set up in the middle school collaboration room. It's close enough to the kitchen for Nadine. But, you know, the cafeteria is just not, not gonna be an option.
How will the clickers?
Um, they've been pre-programmed, and they're matched to your zone. So, there are only so many that will be allowed to vote inside the zone of the auditorium. And if you leave and go to the cafeteria, your auditorium zone clicker will not work. You will have, if you have to go into an overflow space, you will have clickers that are set up for the overflow space. So, if you were to run into the auditorium with your clicker, it will not be recognized. So, the vast majority of clickers will be recognized in the auditorium. But there are about 200 that will not. They've been set to be picked up in the overflow space.
Right.
Because they figured the amount of, uh, clickers they had available would accommodate everyone in the auditorium and not be over capacity for the auditorium.
What is the capacity of the auditorium?
Uh, 608.
Okay.
I know, isn't it really, seriously, that, I know that number.
Oh, I'm impressed with all the preference.
You should have let us bet on whether you're gonna hire a law. Generate some cash.
Okay, we still have to vote. Anthony seconded.
Yes, we didn't vote yet because we were talking about clickers. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we're all set on that one. Um, we are passing over payroll modification. It is not necessary. It may come back at a later date. And we're going to go on to FY '24 budget.
So, I just wanted to just give the committee a brief update. As I mentioned earlier, uh, our team, including our, uh, contracted, uh, finance, uh, consultants, as well as other members of our school department team, are now meeting weekly with the Finance Director from Town Hall. We're hopeful that that's going to be beneficial, not only for us, but also, um, for the, the new finance staff up at Town Hall. I've asked for our team to be able to, uh, run another budget update to provide for the committee, um, at our next meeting. And potentially, some additional line item transfers to, um, handle any, uh, lines that are in deficit. They've been doing a deep analysis of, um, payroll salaries and where all of those lines are. And that's much more complex than the expense lines. Um, so, that will be at our, our next meeting. Um, and you'll have an opportunity to meet them and ask them some questions. They have, you know, they've been learning a new way of, uh, doing things here in Lohnenberg.
That's a nice way to say it.
Some of our processes are rather unique. Um, but they, they have noted that there are some that are not really efficient and require, um, more, more time, uh, on the part of staff. So, potentially, you know, we could engage them, um, in that regard. Additionally, um, the President of the company that we've contracted with, did let me know that they, they do and can, uh, offer, uh, workshops for school committees around best practices in finance. So, that's something that we, um, we may wish to consider at some point.
How much would that cost?
I don't know, but I will find out.
I mean, that's a, I, I would like to know.
That is exactly the right question to ask.
But I would, I, I am very interested in that, especially because we don't have a full-time budget director. So, it would be great to learn more.
Yeah, I think it would be helpful, um, to have that information. So, if it's not ridiculously prohibitive.
Right. I think, you know, in, in looking at, because Mrs. Peterson and I sort of map out annually the types of things that should routinely be happening at different meetings throughout the year. And as you all talk about topics for future, we add those to a running list. Given that we're going to have school handbooks to approve, we will have the retiree reception. Uh, we only have three more meetings before the end of the fiscal year. I don't know if you want to consider, if you, if the committee's interested in... Maybe you're not interested. Um, you, you might want to consider a, a, a separate workshop meeting date versus an add-on to one of the three remaining business meetings that we have for, for the remainder of the year. That's entirely up to you. Or you can wait and, and hear what, um, the team has to say when they provide the budget report for you at the next meeting. And maybe you would have a better sense at that point as to whether or not you wanted or felt you needed a workshop.
If we did that kind of workshop, would it be possible to wait until the new Finance Director's been hired? So, we could all have, like, everybody that knows money at the same place at the same time?
We could. Assuming that I have a candidate that is willing to take the position.
Yeah.
Which I hope to have information for you by next meeting.
So, I will not be attending the next meeting, but, um, you can put me down as very much looking forward to the report, which I'll watch immediately following, uh, and very interested in the workshop. And I don't think we should delay. I think, um, you know, given the situation that we're in and given the interaction that we have with the town and having a greater understanding for what our obligations are and aren't, I think would be, would benefit us and the district as a whole.
I think a workshop would be great if it was off-cycle, um, whenever. I mean, I, I would not mind giving up another night for a workshop. I think it's important and needs to get done, especially going into fiscal year '26. And that cycle, I think, I think we should be ready.
And just regarding the, the suggestion that we have the next, uh, Business Manager for the District, onboard and available to, to attend, I think that if, um, the candidate, uh, were to be interested enough to accept a potential offer, I potentially could have that candidate before you at the next meeting. And, um, I think once they sign a contract, honestly, I don't think we have to wait until July 1st. I think they could come and attend the workshop even if they're not officially starting on the job quite yet here. So, I think, I think that that's still potentially viable.
Yep.
Fingers crossed. That would be fantastic.
Absolutely.
But yeah, I'm, I'm very interested in a workshop.
Okay. All right.
So, thank you very much. I will, um, I'll survey the group relative to available dates to set up a workshop. And I'll see if I can arrange...
Check the costs first. If they're like, it's a thousand dollars a plate, I'm not interested.
Okay. I don't think it'll be a thousand dollars a plate, but I'll find out.
That would be a little pricey.
Also, if we get it done before June 30th, it comes out of this year's budget.
Correct.
Correct.
Which I think I should be able to cover that cost.
That would be better anyways.
Yep.
Very simple, a thousand dollars a plate it is. Let's do it.
Okay, well, then we're moving forward with the discussion of revenue sources.
Okay, so I... Okay, so I talked to the chair about putting this on as a topic. During our budget cycle and the many meetings and the feedback we were getting from parents throughout and the questions that we were getting from parents around, well, couldn't you just have a fee for this or that? Or it's difficult to simultaneously be navigating a tough budget with proposed cuts and charging more fees. What would we charge a fee for? How much would that be? That's, it's tough to do that at the same time because people get upset at the notion of different fees and so on and so forth. So I thought, okay, we've navigated through, we have a budget that's going before town meeting. But looking beyond to FY '26, I'm just curious to gather some feedback and input here. Are there fees that we, you would like me to explore and come back with a recommendation or proposal? Are there things that you, as a committee, would say, that's off the table? Then my team and I won't spend time drafting a proposal on something that the committee is not open to reviewing.
I would say that I would be open to any fee increase so long as all fees are tied to student lunch status. So that if a person is a free school lunch, they don't have a fee, even if it increases. If they are reduced fee, they would still have a reduced lunch, they'd have a reduced fee. As long as that is preserved, I think that people understand that budget cuts everywhere mean everybody's gonna have to chip in a little more.
Right. So current fees include our athletic fees for high school and for middle school. There is a universal activity fee that all high school students pay. We also have facility rental fees.
Do all high school students pay the activity fee or only high school students who do an activity?
All high school students.
They all have, whether or not they do an activity? What is the fee?
Fifty-five dollars.
We just charge all high school students fifty-five dollars? When did that come into play?
That's been a practice.
When my kids were there. My daughter used, it was thirty-five dollars then. My daughter used her thirty-five dollars. My son wouldn't have touched it with a ten-foot pole. But they both had to pay.
We also have facility rentals, which we need to revisit anyway. We need to come in every few years with proposed increases so that we continue to cover our cost. And although the committee may want to consider a change, the mindset around the facility rental rates has really been more about covering costs, not as a way to generate revenue. We have fees for the extended day in the early learning center. You know, a fee that was mentioned by parents in the context of our last budget cycle was transportation. I think the committee at that time weighed in and was not interested in exploring that. Do we want to look at a broad, universal middle school activity fee? Would not be anywhere near the fifty-five dollars. Are there other fees that you want to explore? And then there are other revenue sources, as you already authorized Mr. Heavy to explore, the potential for another cell tower antenna. We could potentially explore additional options with solar as well as school choice. That is a separate next agenda for your consideration. But if we, if we think about these things now and I can work with my team to come up with proposals, if there's anything you're interested in revisiting and seeing a different proposal from what we currently do, we'll have time to talk about it before we get into developing the FY '26 cycle. And you might make a decision that you want to change a fee or a fee structure, but for it not to take effect until FY '26 so that families have advanced notice that there's gonna be a shift. But again, if I and my team know about it by December, we can factor, we can factor that in to our budget development.
I don't know the answer, so I'm just gonna ask. This might be something that's like really basic. Do the students have to pay, like, for a parking pass?
They do.
Okay, and how much is that?
Oh, I think it was fifty dollars. Mrs. Peterson is still, if she's near her computer, is it, is it fifty dollars?
It is fifty dollars.
It's not on our list because that does not go into an account that the schools oversee or.
Where does that, where does that money go?
Where does that go?
Where does that?
To the town general fund, I believe.
Why?
Mrs. Peterson, you can weigh in on that. That's correct, that goes to the general fund?
Yes, that is correct, and that's been a longstanding thing.
Why?
So you could raise the fee, but it's gonna be revenue for the town.
Or we could just stop.
We could say.
What if we eliminated the parking pass?
And put it on the activity fee.
And asked them to rent parking spots?
Oh dear.
So that we, we have, the school receives funds for a parking spot rental.
Can you get us, can you get us information about how, how much the town is getting off our student parking passes?
Well, if, if we have all of our parking spaces occupied based on the number of passes, we should be able to tell you that.
Yeah.
Because we can go back and look and see annually roughly how many.
Roughly, how much is that?
It's like a thousand bucks?
Yeah, probably 200 times 50, right?
No, not even that many.
Not that many?
Okay.
We probably have maybe slightly over a hundred spots in the student lot.
Who collects the fees?
The high school staff.
Who pays for the parking passes, the physical passes?
We do.
Okay, so we're paying money to order parking passes?
To give money to the town.
To give the money to the town?
That's the way it works currently, yes.
Okay, that has to stop. If the town wants the money, the town's gonna have to pay for the parking passes because right now we are losing money buying these little passes.
Let me just double check. Mrs. Peterson, the town does not supply the parking passes, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Beardmore?
So obviously that's something that we need to take a look at. In the state of Massachusetts, we have a history that goes back to 1635, around a free and public education. Several years ago, when I was not a member of this board, turned out to be a COVID year, so it was, I think it was 2019, I said I was gonna keep a running log of every time I opened my wallet that year. And I had two kids in the school system. And when COVID hit, I was over a thousand dollars. There are many families in Lunenburg who do not qualify or meet the free student lunch standards or the partial free student lunch standards that are under enormous financial stress right now. And we have recent census data that supports the fact that the people in Lunenburg who are under the most financial stress are families with children. Fact, not opinion. I am resistant to any fees. I'm practical and I understand the realities of running a school system that can provide as many opportunities as possible to students. But there have been comments made in this room in the last month about, we should have busing fees because I paid for it when my kids were in school. Well, maybe that's the case, but I'm a no. And with the possible exception of facilities rentals, where I think that we should keep an eye on what the costs are and as well as what comparable rentals are in our area and provide those at market rates. I don't think that this is a solution to any budget problem. And I would be very difficult to convince otherwise.
Mr. Layden?
I would agree with Mr. Beardmore. When we were having the transportation discussion, I had asked about the costs and what it would, how it would connect with the fees. And the fee was gonna be so much that it was gonna be unaffordable for families to pay a bus fee that would actually cover the cost of the buses. We see the same thing with the sports and the covering of the buses too, that it's just such an expensive fee. So I have concerns about the fees. The only, when we brought up the bus transportation, I was interested in a fee, but it was really for the purpose of parents to avoid a small fee because they were gonna pick up their kids anyways. So they would fill out the form and say, okay, I definitely don't wanna do the transportation on the bus because I'm just gonna pick up my kid. We would then know that we had that seat available for students. That was my only thought about a transportation fee. Otherwise, fees, I am not a proponent of charging fees because it's not gonna cover the cost. And I think when the citizens bring that, it's frustrating because we don't charge fees when the police have to go help you at your house or the fire department is going to your house. So again, we're not getting fees on that end too, so they shouldn't be raising fees.
We are for the ambulance.
There's an ambulance.
Emergency services can charge fees.
There is.
I agree with Brian totally. With the transportation fee, the only way I would see charging a transportation fee is if we got into a situation where we couldn't fit everyone on the bus and we said, okay, well then it's gonna be 10 bucks a kid to get on the bus and that way you gotta really want it. Because there, you know, if you're one of the people who saved a spot for their kid on the bus on the off chance they could need it, but you're picking them up every day, then the 10 dollars might sway you in either way. But if we're gonna require children be at school, we need to be transporting them and not charging exorbitant amounts of money to get them there.
Well, you would, I don't agree with the transportation fee either, but you would only charge those kids that you are not legally obligated to transport.
So.
The school, Bernie.
In order of, I think, hopefully, support, I think every school committee member would like to see why we are subsidizing the town in providing parking passes for fee collect.
It's not a lot of money, but it's still the point.
It's not a lot of money, but any amount of money matters.
It's the point, yes.
The second thing is, I think that the transportation fee is a no-go. I would never support that. However, I do think that athletic fees and activity fees are something that I would support. And I understand that they would not cover the cost of the athletic endeavor, but they may help get coaches paid, which I think would be a valuable thing. I also think that while the fees are high, to Peter's point, the reality is that in, in most families that have kids that do lots of athletics, number one, the fee is not the most expensive thing. And number two, the kids that go to like travel sports, the fees are way, way more. And so if we're looking at our offerings in a marketplace, I think that raising the athletic fees, the activity fee is weird, but just the athletic fee, that one I think is a more palatable thing to do. Because while I get Peter's point about people being under the gun financially, if those same people are also taking their kid to like travel soccer every week or travel baseball or travel basketball, they're paying more than what we are charging them. So I don't, I don't have an issue with raising the athletic fees.
I'm not gonna belabor the argument, but I completely disagree with you.
I mean, but the other thing is like, we need the money, right? And if, if it's not something that we are constitutionally obligated as part of a free, appropriate public education, you know, we would never do this, but we don't have to do those things. These are optional things that we provide kids. If they are optional things that incur cost and the cost for athletics is in the same budget as the cost for constitutionally obligated services, I mean, we can have a point of principle, but money is money and we're taking money away from things that we have to do to spend it on things that we want to do.
Are there other fees that go to the town's general fund?
Yes, that was my.
Can you look into that? Are there other fees or charges that one would expect to go into the schools' funds that are going into the town's general funds instead?
The pre-K tuition down at the primary school?
What?
Why?
How much is?
Oh my goodness.
That's at the primary school, not at TCP?
Right, the regular, regular pre-K.
Who, who pays the salary of the teachers?
We do.
Okay, and it's at our building?
Yes. We, we provide a special education preschool program because we do have to pick students up or the public schools somewhere. You've gotta pick up kiddos from the age of three up if they need services.
And we pay for that transportation, but we don't get the fee?
They only get, for the pre-K, they get the transportation only if it's in their IEP.
Okay, okay, okay.
Most parents drive.
Right, most parents drive kids. So the program, we take in a certain number of what in education is commonly termed typical peers. So students that don't have IEPs to be part of the cohort with, with the children that are coming in with IEPs. So we would have to pay teachers and we would have to have classrooms. So it's not as if we can just say, we're just not gonna do that anymore.
Oh, no, 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 I think we just want to go get that money.
No, I'm just confused, what, is there a reason it goes to the town and not the school system? That's.
It's probably the law.
It's the way it was set up.
Because that's the way it is.
I think these are separate issues.
Yes, yes.
And I think that, I think that we should approach them separately.
Yep. That is a discussion for another night.
Are there any more? Because this has been really illuminating.
We can put this on an agenda.
Yeah, can we?
And see where those things are. But just to remind you, I always think of, the school budget is somewhat of a, it's probably a bad analogy, but a shell game in that, you know, if we got the money back for the pre-K tuition, then whatever that is, suppose it's 20,000 dollars. That's 20,000 dollars we wouldn't get from the town.
Because the town doesn't have it to give us.
Because the town doesn't have it. It's not like they're trying to be difficult. They don't have it, it's all our money. It's just how it is allocated. And like I say, if we got that tuition, that's that much less we would get from the town. So it, it perhaps would make cleaner bookkeeping. But other than that, I don't know that it's, it would make a tremendous difference. It's the principle of the thing, once again.
I actually don't think it is.
When the costs go up, I mean, our costs go up, but the two, it.
So here's my point, I don't think it is. You and Dr. Burnham? You and Dr. Burnham had to do so many meetings over so many hours negotiating to get money from the town. If that money doesn't go to the town in the first place but stays with us, I'm not sure it's a dollar-for-dollar shell game transfer. If we know we have it and we can count on it, that's different than having to go beg the town for it.
Well, that's true.
Because this money would come directly to us because it's pre-K tuition. It's not.
I.
That's.
I agree with Carol. I, having been through this once or twice.
And we'll take a look at it.
This is put it in one pocket, stick it in another.
Yeah, yeah. I'm kind of like a bucket thing, but it's a discussion for sure. Regarding my thoughts on this, I am a definite no on the transportation and on the middle school activity fee. I don't like that all high school kids have to pay that fee whether they use it or not. It bothers me. It always has. But that's the way it's done. I could see a restructuring of that fee at like $15 an activity or something.
Just because that's the way it's always been done doesn't mean it can change.
People who use it, use it, you know? I don't know. But I don't know what they do with that money. If that money is something like for graduation and everybody does graduation, then yeah, that makes sense. Where did the class fees go? Did they go into the class treasuries?
Yeah.
Yes.
Oh. So anyways, I wouldn't do a middle school activity fee. I would look at the high school athletic fee and the middle school athletic fee just because I know with the little slew thing that we're in the middle, we're not at the top, we're not at the bottom of charges. That could be looked at. I would like to look at the facility rentals. I still think extended-day early learning centers should be even.
Self-sustaining.
Yeah, self-sustaining. I really don't think we should make money off of that. I'm very interested in the cell tower and the solar idea. Now, at town meeting, and I didn't pay attention, maybe Peter knows better than I do, isn't there something about making like solar garage-type things? You know, parking lots that have solar panels? There was something in the zoning about that.
Yeah, I'm not familiar enough to comment.
No, but it was something that there was going to be possible to do. You know, I don't know if that's, if that's, I mean aesthetically, it's not great, but. I don't know. What would we do for solar? Would we put panels on the high school or would we?
Well, there are panels.
There are panels, well then.
There's panels on the high school and there's panels on Turkey Hill.
On Turkey Hill and primary school doesn't get a lot of, well, it does get sun.
I mean, the problem with solar panels, when you put them on a roof, is then you limit your options when it comes to your roof.
Yeah.
And.
That's why I won't have them on my roof.
You know, and that's why I don't have them on my roof right now because of the age of the roof and, you know, those kinds of things. So I mean, I think we should be open to all external revenue sources. By the way, like sponsorships is a topic, right? Like if you go to, I spend a lot of time going to sporting events in other towns, some towns allow for sponsorships, you know, to be placed on the fencing in their athletic facilities. Our policy is different. You know, like those are the kinds of things that potentially we could look at. But they do require a little bit of time and attention to figure them out.
Yeah, yeah. I don't know if I care for that, but we'll see what happens, but.
We've had one sitting on that scoreboard that's been perpetual for the last 15 years, you know? The Foster Healy one, but.
That's true.
Just never went away.
That's true.
Sponsorships isn't a terrible idea.
Does this give you any help?
I'm clear, I think.
On what we don't want.
That we're in agreement that there are no new fees we want to look at, right?
Well, unless we found something other that was, but I don't like anything that's there under new fees, for sure.
I mean, ultimately, the budget issues are not going to be fixed.
Oh, it's not going to fix the budget. No, of course not.
It makes it hard and then we just end up burying parents in fees.
There's also administrative costs, right? Like, I mean, the busing thing, I think, is a perfect example.
Yeah, would be very administrative.
There may be a benefit in dissuading people from participating in busing, although I believe that that creates a traffic problem. But the cost in the central office of trying to administer that is a whole other can of worms, you know?
Agreed.
Can we ask Mr. Hevy if he has thoughts on solar?
We can. Mr. Hevy, do you have any thoughts on the cell tower business or the solar business?
Not to put you on the spot, I'm sorry. You're the one who would know.
Is, in regards to the cell tower, I have a meeting next month with the AT&amp;T vendor. And we are going to explore some different options. And once I get through that process, then I'll come back and provide you with an update on that. As far as solar, something that I wanted to explore is the solar canopies in the parking lot. I don't know if it's, you know, like you say, aesthetics.
Yeah.
Have to look at it, see, see what kind of visuals I can get on it. But it's just something with all the solar projects, grants and stuff out there. It's just something that I wanted to explore. And that would be, there would be some revenue that would come in. But other than that, I haven't, I don't know how much ground solar we would have. I don't think we have enough.
Space.
Space and to do that. And that's kind of why I first picked the parking lot. But it's, it's just all, it's beginning stages of exploring it, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
All right, anything else on this topic?
I think the only other thought, just in regards to revenue sources, I think it's going back to grants and even fundraisers too. Working with the PTO, things like that, get creative like that. I don't want to put more burden on the families with additional fees. And the non-fees make more sense.
All right. Well, then I guess we go on to the next topic.
Okay, this was helpful. Thank you.
School choice.
Again, this is just something for consideration. We have already taken a vote that we will participate in the school choice program. And we have already agreed that we will open five seats in the ninth grade. As I say every year, when we come in with a recommendation around school choice, we receive many phone calls about school choice seats at the lower grades. We have always prioritized to make sure that we can keep our class sizes at 25 or under, particularly at the lower grades. That said, it's another opportunity for everyone to reassess. We would have to take a vote and make a decision by the next meeting in order to be able to report to the state by June 1st. I've mapped it out for you, the total number of kindergarten, well, the kindergarten went up just before I came here tonight. So our class sizes at kindergarten are now at like 21. But you can see, I would not recommend any seats at kindergarten. Based on our class sizes for first grade, they're at 22, although I think we may be up to 111 in the first grade. But five seats at first grade would put your class size at 23. You could still have 10 move-ins to first grade and still keep your class size at 25 or under. Second grade, our class sizes, there are five different second grade classrooms, but already we're at 24 in several of them. Again, you want to be able to leave a little bit of a buffer to accommodate new students moving to town. So we would not recommend any seats there. Third grade is the same. Our class sizes, three out of the five classes are already at 25. Fourth grade, our class sizes are at 23 or 22. If you open two seats, they would all be at 23 and you would still have 10 seats and for move-ins, but keep to the 25 or under. Fifth grade, class sizes are 22, one class of 21. You could potentially add up to six seats here. Sixth grade, class sizes are at 24 or 25 already, so we wouldn't want to add any there. Seventh grade, class sizes are at 22. You could potentially add five choice seats and still have room to accommodate 10 move-ins and stay at 25. Eighth grade, three out of the five classes are already at 25. The other two are at 24, so we would not be, you know, recommending any consideration for seats there. If you were to look at all the numbers that have been proposed, it's a total of 18. We would receive from the state 5,000 per student. If all 18 were filled, and we open seats at the high school and they don't always fill. So this is not guaranteed. It's potential. You could potentially have additional revenue of 90,000. That said, in all fairness, the cost per pupil is more than $5,000. So you have to strike a balance and be careful. We can't tip to having to add a classroom and a teacher because the costs there are, you know, additional. Again, I'm not looking for a vote this evening. I'm just giving you additional data for consideration, knowing that, again, next year, we're probably looking at another tough budget cycle. If you got kiddos into the system in the early grades, they tend to stay through. Again, not, we don't need to do a vote. I just wanted to give you some data, something, you know, for you to consider while it's still an option, right?
Right.
By June 1st, it's no longer an option. But there's also the flip side too, that if we're looking at more cuts next year.
Then those classes will be bigger.
Yep. So full transparency. It could go either way. But again, it's information that I just wanted to provide to the committee for consideration. And you may decide, nope, we're just staying right with the vote that we already took. We're not adding any seats at any grade.
Brian?
So a question. For, say, a scenario, a student's school choices into first grade or second grade, would they be guaranteed that spot throughout all the way up to 12 or would they have to reapply for school choice?
My understanding is that once they're accepted in.
Once they're in, they're in.
They're in.
Thank you.
But we can double-check that and have that information confirmed for you at the next one.
I think it's in, I think it's in our policy.
It's also in our policy.
I mean, it would be cruel.
Right.
To allow a student to start here and then say, sorry.
Yeah.
Can't go to school with your friends anymore. So.
The other thing that you all need to know is that we don't get to pick and choose.
Right.
Which students we accept.
Yep.
If they apply and there's a seat available, we have to accept them.
In Townsend, where they did not pass the override, they're looking at class sizes of up to 30 kids. Next year, we're going to be looking at budget issues again for FY '26. Do you see a scenario where we could be looking at class sizes that large in the lower grades?
So it depends on how much we have to cut. We gave you for the worst-case scenario budget this cycle, and there were additional cuts listed that we're not going to have to make with the budget that's going forward to town meeting. I can't say because I don't know what we'll be projecting for increases for health insurance costs or transportation costs for FY '26. We will be bidding the bus contract next winter. So there are going to be costs that are going to go up and we know that. Costs go up every year. But yeah, I think that we're looking at cuts and if we're not, if we're not going to make programmatic cuts, we don't have enough custodians to cut.
Yeah, we're running out of things to cut. That's, I mean, next year.
We don't have enough, cutting additional paraprofessionals, cutting.
We're out of cuts to make.
Secretary, we need to have secretaries to process all of the day-to-day work in the building, so. And I can't look to the expense lines to cut because we've already, we've already cut them. I can get a little bit of money maybe from a cut in an expense line, but not enough to hold back additional teacher cuts. And I'm very unhappy to be saying that publicly right now because I don't want to lose any more of our good teachers. We were notified within the last week that we are losing the teacher that was up for Teacher of the Year. They will be going elsewhere. And when you talk about limited funding sources already for next year, and it's just being honest. I mean, this is what we're looking at. We'll be looking at more staff cuts. There's really no place else in the budget that we would make up any substantial gap.
Right.
Okay, my, because my concern is that pursuing that. So the state gives us, for people who don't know, the state gives us $5,000 a student for school choice. That number's been $5,000 for how long?
My entire time here. I didn't even know when they set that rate. That's been a long time.
It's been a very long time and they haven't raised it and they've specifically chosen not to raise it. Our state legislators have chosen not to raise the school choice amount, which makes it hard to do school choice because it makes it hard to educate the students who are school choicing in. It's a burden on the town. So it makes it, it makes it hard to look at the potential $90,000 in conjunction with maybe not knowing what's going to happen in FY '26. Like, are we trading the potential money next year for trouble down the road? And I don't, I don't know. But luckily, we don't have to vote on this till after town meeting.
Right, that will be helpful.
And the ballot vote, so that will give us a much clearer picture of. So that will give us a much clearer picture of the town's appetite for funding schools appropriately and adequately.
I should know the answer to this question, but I really have no idea. I do know, and just for the committee's knowledge, I think we all know this, but school choice is a trailing revenue source. So if we bring in a student for school year '24, '25, that money doesn't hit until the '26 budget. So, just so everybody knows. We effectively educate that kid for free for a year, and then we get it in arrears.
Does it come in Chapter 70 funding?
No, it's a different line in the cherry sheets.
Okay.
But that was actually the nature of my question.
Yeah.
So, does that student count as an enrolled student for Chapter 70 calculations? That inbound student?
Only if they're here on October 1, it counts for the next year.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah. So there is a...
I would think as well.
I would think it would.
So it isn't just the 5,000. It's also the state's foundation contribution in Chapter 70, which is a considerable, I mean, not as much as we'd like...
We can double-check.
And not under our control in terms of where those Chapter 70 funds are applied. But it is, you know, once again...
It would go to the town, which would help out.
Yeah. But could potentially flow through, you know.
Okay.
I think in regards to Laura's comment about the class sizes, if we were to cut a teacher, we're just dividing the total by four instead of five, or five instead of six, it definitely comes out to class sizes around 28 to 31.
You did the math.
Yes.
Oh.
The math teacher did the math.
Math teacher is helpful.
Okay.
So there's that risk. There's also the risk that, you know, I mean, and it's a sm- much smaller risk, but that, you know, development in local enrollment drives up our numbers as well during, you know, if you're enrolling a second grader, you're committed to that kid for 12 years.
Do we know when the Howard Street subdivision is?
Nothing else on that.
It's not.
That's not gonna...
Not anytime soon.
We just want to make...
We won't worry about that right now.
But, but, you know, I mean, it...
But that could pop up someplace else.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. Yeah. I mean, there's this, you know, new MBTA communities thing where we could get a 10-story building in Whalen, you know?
Right. You don't know?
So, anyway.
Another factor, again, it's just another factor to consider. If a student chooses in and they have an IEP, we have to...
We own an IEP.
Right. We cannot say, "We're not, we're not accepting IEP students."
Yeah.
We have to take those students and we have to deliver...
Right.
...the services.
What if it's one of the $100,000...
Out-of-district placement kids.
Then...
It's not...
Out-of-district placement kids.
Well, an out-of-district placement is not, that does not, that's not part of the math here, right?
Can that happen?
Do you want to answer that one, Mrs. Hanscom?
I want to be careful.
We just thought you wanted to stretch.
So, with any students who are on an IEP, they have a student claim form, so I'm actually going to be working with Liz on that this week, right, Liz? So I fill out the form, and we get a certain percent, a certain amount back for whatever services we provide for that student throughout the year. It's not the complete amount of what it actually costs us, but it's something, it's similar to Circuit Breaker. If I were to claim a student in district on Circuit Breaker, I'm similar to that.
What percentage is it, like, 1% or is it 70?
It might be 3,000, because they're generally inclusion students, even if they're in our Achieve or our TLC rooms, we're maybe getting back when it's all said and done, like 3,000 I believe.
But for out-of-districts, we're not paying out-of-districts on IEP.
For out-of-districts, the...
It's where they live.
It's where they live.
Yeah.
Okay. So that wouldn't happen because it would be...
Not for out-of-districts. Oh, oh. So it wouldn't happen to us.
No.
Not in this, not in this circumstance.
We don't assume the out-of, so in that case, it really doesn't make sense for somebody to school-choose a student here if they're already out of district. That being said, we have a student who comes in, we're not able to meet their needs, I then have to reconvene a team with the sending, with the school where they live, the district where they live, to talk about what the placement is going to be because that, the town of origin would be responsible for the payments of that. But it's, so it, there's a lot of different factors with school choice. There's a lot of different factors. It really is a crapshoot when you're talking about, you can't deny anybody.
Right.
And there are processes in place to help recoup some of those funds, but it is what it is. But we do get some additional cost back if they're on an IEP. And it's up until the students are 22 that we have to keep them in district. We have, we have that as well.
Yeah. I don't know. Again, I'm not going to be at the next meeting. You guys can vote on this, but my feeling on it is, is I would vote no. And my thinking on it is just, there's risks either way, like this is risk calculus, but I feel like we should control what we can control, and there's a lot of uncontrollables in this one that, you know...
I do appreciate the extra revenue and the hunt for extra revenue. So thank you for...
All right.
Doing the numbers on it.
Can I just ask a question?
Of course.
This is Dr. Burnham and Ms. Hanscom. I'm sorry, I should have, I just didn't want to... The risk of like, the very complicated, somebody comes in and then we determine we can't meet his need or her need, and we have to place them out. You've, like, we only currently have seven out-of-district placements, correct?
We have nine.
Okay, nine. So the chance that that worst-case scenario financially happens is relatively low.
It's happened once in my career.
How long, I mean, how many...
Not in Lunenburg.
Okay. How many years? Like, how many kids? What, like, what's the sample size for one, like lots, right?
Yeah, I mean, we, I had more school-choice students when I was in my previous district than I've ever had here.
Okay.
Once, once the Devens kids got out of the mix, our school-choice numbers went way down.
So like, that worst-case scenario is just like a...
It's a worst-case scenario.
But it's like a super-small percentage chance.
Super-small percentage chance. I'm more concerned with the fact that we really try to meet all kids' needs. So we own these kids regardless of their school-choice or not. So you've got to think about that added stress that may be on teachers to meet the needs of students that might be, I mean, I'm never going to say, "Oh, that student's school-choice, let's, having a little bit of difficulty, she's having a little bit of difficulty, let's get the other district in." We're always going to try to meet those kids', those students' needs. But that, in turn, we know some students that are more high-needs, place additional stressors on, on the staff.
Okay.
So it's just realizing that as well. That being said, like, I lost a staff member this year because she went to a different district who would school-choice her children in. So there's that factor, too. Like, there's just so many back and forths, like, we could what-if it from now until whenever, but there's always pluses and minuses.
Then what would your recommendation be?
I can tell you offline, no. No, it really, really, all of the, all of the things that I just said, it really goes back and forth.
Can we prioritize staff children for school-choice, or is that not allowed?
No.
Don't do any of that.
Okay. Do we have staff that want to school-choice their children in?
I imagine that we do.
Dr. Burnham, what would your recommendation be?
I would recommend that you don't consider any numbers in excess of what I've put here, for sure.
Yeah.
Because that would not make me comfortable. If we have to make additional cuts next year, we are going to be looking at cutting teaching positions. That means class sizes are going to...
Go up.
Go up.
And this would only cover one...
So if we add, you know, students in, we'll definitely be in the range of 30. If, if we have move-ins, see, this is where, you know, relative to budgeting, you know, this in education, budgeting in education is not an exact science. It's not. There's so many what-ifs.
What's the marginal stress placed on a teacher going from 25 to 26? I don't know, so I'm asking...
25 to 26 isn't a lot.
Brian, Carol, you, and Julia.
20 to 24.
Right.
But if you're talking 25 to 28 in an elementary classroom, that's a huge difference. That's huge.
Yeah. I would refer to you, the elementary teacher. I'll talk high school numbers, but...
Yeah. To me, you get much above 24 in an elementary classroom, and it's hard.
Above what?
24.
Keep in mind, we really protected those positions this year. We doubled down on protecting those class sizes this year to the detriment of other buildings and other staff. So that's where we're going next year, most likely.
Right. Because we, if we, we're not going to be able to cut a substantial number of teachers at the high school level because we won't be able to have a schedule. We, based on our class sizes right now with the middle school, we did not, we had, we had a retirement that we recommended that we would not fill. But I don't see a way that we're going to be able to make cuts to staffing at the middle school. We would have to revamp our entire schedule there and look at enrichment time and, you know, our rotation of Unified Arts classes and, because we looked hard. We looked really hard at what cuts we could make for this year without really totally, fundamentally changing everything that we're, we're doing.
What do similarly funded school districts do in terms of school choice? Like, the comparables that we use for all different kinds of things?
I have no idea. Can I look it up?
Yeah. I don't have that answer.
I don't know. I know a lot, don't bother with it because it's only $5,000, and the state hasn't raised it. Dr. Burnham, you've done a great job at keeping that current fifth-grade class...
This is the bold class.
That's the bold class. Just the fact that you have managed to keep the class sizes below 25 for six years, thank you. Well, for...
Well, we wouldn't be able to do it without the funding to be able to do it, so...
That took a lot of shuffling. I'm just, I'm looking at the numbers and the way that it, I don't know.
Okay. So I'm going to say that we're going to look at this again next week unless anybody else has something they really need to say so we can move along, because I think our next two topics may be a little long.
Oh, no.
But I thank you. I just, again, wanted to give you the opportunity, provide you some data so that you could make some decisions that are not in the heat of a tough budget cycle. Because it helps me, because, believe it or not, I'm already in my mind building FY '26.
Next week, next year. Yeah. Okay. So we move on to athletic funding.
Okay. So, we provided some overview information back in November before Mr. Cassidy left the district. But in conversation with Mr. Beardmore, he wanted to be able to share more publicly things to clarify for folks who maybe have some mistaken impressions...
Yes.
Right?
Absolutely.
About how we fund our programs. So, we have our athletic program, which is just the middle school and high school program. The Bengals are not our program. Lysa Soccer is not our, our program. And the program is really funded through the Athletic Revolving Account and our school department budget. You'll see booster clubs hanging out there and facilities hanging out there, facility rental, because I am aware that there are people that believe that that's a factor. So I just want to visually show that they are separated, not directly connected to funding our programs. Quick school department budget overview. If you look at the expense lines for athletics in the budget, we budget 95,000. Athletic transportation, we budget 40,000. However, fall transportation...
Wow.
Is over 58,000. Winter transportation is almost 27,000, and spring, not, not as much.
Why is that?
Why is spring so much cheaper?
No football.
I think we'll, we'll see some things as we continue to go through.
Okay.
That's a ton of money.
Is it football?
More teams.
Well, in part, yeah, we've, yeah, we've, yeah, as I go through, we'll, we'll start to see some things. We also, in our budget, cover athletic insurance and athletic equipment reconditioning, but that really pertains to football equipment. Our athletic director has a schedule for uniform replacement. We can only afford to replace a couple teams a year.
What is unified sports?
So, our unified sports, we have basketball and track, track, cross-country. And our special ed students participate on the team with typical peers. It's a smaller, typically, it's a smaller group. And our basketball team, sort of, their season is a little off-cycle from the typical basketball season. They're a little bit earlier, but that's what those are. And you can see that R A D provides Unified Sports a T-shirt every year, and our middle school, cross-country, and golf, receive a polo every year.
I think middle school track also gets T-shirts.
Yep. You might be right about that one, too. Okay, so, new equipment, we budget 6,000. You can see that that's probably just a bit too little, but it's for annual purchase of footballs, soccer balls, socks, pucks for hockey, baseballs, softballs, like, all, all of that kind of stuff. That's, that's the equipment. So the Athletic Revolving Account, the funds that go into the revolving account come from user fees, that's the, that's the athletic fee.
Athletic fee.
Ticket sales at games, and co-op fees from other districts. We have, at one time, we had more, but at this point, we, we only have a couple of co-op, where we don't have enough students for a team and another district doesn't have enough students for a team, but we join together. Like, our hockey team is a co-op team. It's Air Shirley with Lunenburg.
What are they called? Are they the Knights, or are they the...
I do believe they are. The Knights.
The other ones are dorky.
Well, yeah, I need to...
I think so.
They play under our banner.
I don't know. Let me double-check on that.
What was the question again? I'm sorry.
What's the team name of the Air Shirley Lunenburg Hockey Team?
Yeah, they are, they are, they are the Knights.
I thought so.
I thought so.
They're the Air Shirley Lunenburg Knights.
And I think it depends, like, our girls, we only had two girls, and they played primarily on the Air Shirley team, so I think they're more considered Air Shirley.
Yeah, maybe, yeah. I've never been to one of their games.
And that's Courtney Fuller, your recording secretary for the school committee, who is also your athletic secretary.
Athletic secretary, right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do we have to pay co-op fees, like, for the two girls that...
If, it depends on who the host school is. Sometimes we're the host school, sometimes the other school is the host school, and we would have to pay whatever fees their kids would be paying as well, and same for us.
I like that. That's a good way to...
The kinds of things that get paid out are all of the athletic officials.
That's a lot.
Yep. So your umpires, your referees, if you need to have a special... If you need to have a special detail, so if we ever had to have like an EMT present, that's coming out of here, too. Our coaches' stipends are paid out of this account. Athletic expenses and supplies, really more so paid out of revolving than the budget. Our athletic staff are coaches, the, the only ones paid in the local budget are the trainer and the A.D. Because we have a trainer, the trainer works with students in the training room and we now need supplies for the trainer to work with students. We also pay for the athletic trainers' professional organizational membership. We pay the cost for final forms. We, we fund end-of-season letters and pins as well as we're, we're funding Huddle.
What's that?
It's really, I guess it's a streaming service. Mr. Beardmore, how do I?
Yeah, it does a bunch of things. It's a, it's an online platform that allows for, first and foremost, film, so game film to be uploaded and then organized by coaches and shared with opposing coaches. So back in the day when I played, coaches would literally meet a certain amount of time before a game and trade VHS tapes. I am the videographer for Lunenburg High School Football and I press a button and then our coach presses a button and everybody gets the film. And they can be organized by play type and athlete and that kind of thing. And then our athletes have Huddle pages, which is kind of like you have to have it now in high school sports. And if a coach wants, a college coach wants to look at an athlete's performance, it's all done through Huddle to include highlight tapes and so on and so forth. And now, they also do streaming. So we now have, I believe, Huddle equipment in our, in our, I know we have it on our, on our track and field facility.
We have it indoors in the gym.
I think it might also be in the gymnasium and we can use that to stream games live.
And PAC could actually.
PAC could tap into that as well. So it's a, it's not inexpensive, but it is a phenomenally cool.
Oh, that's way cooler than that. Can students tell if coaches, college coaches are looking at their page?
I don't know. I have no idea. But I was at a recruitment camp this past weekend and the coaches specifically talked about how to organize your Huddle page for, for prospective athletes.
All right, well, that sounds like it's necessary.
You gotta have it, you gotta have it.
All right, so for the current year, you've got numbers of student athletes in each season minus the current spring season. They're still rounding up data on that one. How many students are full fee? How many would be paying a reduced fee, including siblings? And then how many are a waived fee? And we have those numbers for you as well for middle school. So those numbers are revenue into the revolving account. Ticket sales are estimated at about five thousand in the fall and thirty-five hundred in the winter and they're, they don't charge for the spring spectator sport, so there's no revenue coming in there.
I would say that's also a frustration for a lot of parents to have to go to the games and pay to watch their children play.
Yep.
Is that common everywhere?
It, it depends on the sport. Like, like the superintendent said, the spring sports don't have it. It's very common in basketball and football, but not as common in the other sports.
Are all of the ticket sales for basketball and football?
No, because if they have.
Ice soccer, probably.
Yeah, and I think, you know, if they have night games for soccer or they probably, not that they have night games all the time. Although we have done a better job of trying to accommodate and have game schedules later so that parents can get to them. We used to have them right, you know, three, three-thirty in the afternoon, so.
Couple of notes here, gate fees are relatively standard wherever I go. You know, I go to football and track meets predominantly, but basketball games, I went to games at Pittsburgh and a couple of other places this past year and paid, paid fees. What is not standard are athletic fees. Within our league, the, the, the team that we, we were, we, we had a meet with yesterday in, in, in track, they, to my knowledge, they do not have athletic fees. So, you know, back to my earlier point, these, these are not necessarily standard across the board. There are a lot of cities and towns that do not charge athletic fees, but, but by and large, I pretty hard-pressed to not reach out of my pocket when I'm going into a gate to, to pay a, a gate fee. But it is, but it is frustrating to pay both.
Do we know what the revenue, like, could you ever offset the athletic fees with gates?
That would be a, that would be a pretty big number.
Okay.
I mean, you're talking thirty-eight thousand to five, it's like a seven to one, eight to one.
I remember all four high schools having to pay to get into games.
And we do waive, I believe, for our students for gates.
Correct.
And we also offered this year, parents a season pass, basically, which was nice.
I think that's cool.
Which was pretty cool, you know, I mean.
It's a way for our parents to save a little bit of money, not substantially.
But that's.
But.
The effort is there.
It's also the convenience of not having to have cash at the gate because lots of people don't deal in cash anymore.
Can I just ask a question about funding v. the Snack Shack? We don't get any of that money.
No.
No.
Do we charge a rental fee?
We do.
Okay.
But we don't take a portion of the profits. Concession stand.
Oh.
Who runs that? It's the Booster Clubs.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Booster Clubs can request use of the concession stand. Most athletic programs and boosters, they don't run them every time there's a game because honestly, running the boost, the Snack Shack is a, a lot of effort. And you need people to volunteer and so on and so forth, so. Booster organizations use the Snack Shack and the Bengals will use the Snack Shack. But the fee to use the Snack Shack is not like a hefty fee.
It also requires a certified person.
Yeah.
Sort of same.
Which we don't provide, they do.
Is there any way that we could change that and generate revenue from the Snack Shack or would it not be working?
You could charge a higher concession stand rental fee.
But it's.
But the problem is that if you raise it too much, you run the risk of more boosters saying, yeah.
Never mind.
We're not going to make enough money out of it, so we're, we're just not gonna rent it.
But they're also running it as a fundraiser anyways, so it's, I mean, why?
It benefits the kids.
Yeah.
You're, you're literally taking, once again, taking the money out of one pocket, putting it in another.
That said, we are going to have to look at the operating costs.
Oh, absolutely.
We've got a grease trap now since we've upgraded, that needs to be cleaned out. There's the cost of the water, the electricity, because we have multiple refrigerators and microwaves and a warming tray, so we didn't have all of that before. So there's utilities.
With all of that, would it benefit us to run it ourselves during football?
That's what I'm saying.
Games and?
We would have to hire staff.
Hey, so that would, that would probably mean we wouldn't make any money.
Having spent a lot of time in the Snack Shack at football games, it's a lot to run it. Now all the rules.
Yep.
I mean, I did it when there weren't any rules.
Yep. So, again, just taking a look at the cost to run all this and I, I'd need to verify, but I think largely what you see here is based on FY twenty-four numbers. So it costs us ninety-two thousand, six hundred and change to run our fall athletic programs. It costs us almost ninety-one thousand to run our winter programs and another eleven thousand to run our spring programs.
That's a lot of money.
What was spring again? Just so.
Eleven thousand. So.
Does that, can I ask a question? So does that include the salaries of the coaches?
Should.
Yeah, I do believe it does. Let me just.
That eleven thousand seems small.
Yeah, a lot of the numbers seem small if we're including the salaries.
Like, I'm kidding, why is indoor track seventeen thousand, but like boys lacrosse is six hundred and twelve dollars?
So, spring numbers are up until now. Any information?
Oh, thank you.
Yeah.
All right.
So all of the spring is stuff in what we have now. For the fall and the winter sports, that does not include coaches.
Does not include.
But it does include all of the officials and things, but that does not include coaches.
Thank you.
Oh, my God.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We're spending a lot on sports.
What's the, what's the, like, the number of students per dollar? So like, you know, if there's a hundred kids that do a cheap sport, that's a better bang for the buck than an expensive sport.
We have a lot of kiddos that do the, the track, but the problem is, when you, when you get larger teams and they're going to competitions or games, it costs us more in buses. And some of the most costly trips are the ones, as an example, you got a bus to a track meet and the bus doesn't just drive you there and drop you off and come back at six o'clock later that night. They sit there and we have to pay them.
Even if it's to Leominster, some of our most expensive bus trips were to Leominster because D charges us, they come pick up the kids and then they charge us so much money for them to be in the parking lot and there's no way around that.
The other thing about the track is that there, there are invitational fees. So if you want to bring your team to compete, you have to pay an entrance fee to, to get in. Whereas we don't have to pay a fee to play another hockey team. They're on our schedule, it's fine. We, we have to look for those additional opportunities.
More common in the winter track program and obviously Reggie Lewis has to be maintained and they make money and all that kind of.
What, what happens if we have another round of cuts? In terms of, are we ever going to consider cutting these?
Well, one of the things that I.
When it's like a ton of money and there's like ten kids.
Well, one of the things that I suggested, if you had wanted to consider modifying your athletic director position, your athletic trainer position, if you reduce them at all, particularly the athletic director, having to organize and structure and change buses and call and notify, we're canceling the, a game, so on and so forth. For all middle school sports and all high school sports, there's a lot of work there. So to reduce that position to part-time, my suggestion was, if you're going to reduce how much time the A.D. can be working, you really ought to look at reducing the program that he's overseeing and coordinating. So that's when I suggested that if that, if that were something that you would want to consider, that I would also recommend that you're looking at eliminating the middle school sports programs. I will say, when I arrived here in the district.
There weren't any middle school sports.
There was one that was being piloted and that was field hockey.
What about eliminating transportation?
You could. And parents would have to transport and that does happen for us. We, we don't, we don't typically get a bus to take the golf team.
Why not?
To play.
Insurance-wise, you can't let kids drive. I believe that's a MIAA thing.
Well, it's also license restrictions and all kinds of stuff.
Yeah, you can't, you can't. I know even for the musical stuff, they don't, if a kid shows up for a music festival for an audition and they drove themselves, they're disqualified.
What? Holy moly, okay, all right.
You can't go there, the kids can't drive.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Fostering such independence.
No, it's, yeah. So, is this the last slide, the Booster Club slide?
Nope, so the Booster Clubs, just so that everybody's aware. The Booster Clubs are not school clubs. They are not under the governance of the school department or the school committee.
Right.
They are totally separate organizations. The, the only oversight, if you will, is through a subcommittee of the school committee, the Athletic Advisory Council, and largely that's about overseeing and approving the different fundraising efforts so that not everybody's doing the same exact fundraiser at exactly the same time. There's a little bit more.
Even that's turned out to be kinda pro forma at best.
But that, you know, was one of the original goals, I think, around the formation of that committee. Not that they don't talk about other things as well.
I think it's good for them to talk to each other.
Sure.
Be connected.
Yep.
Oh, yeah. Community building.
Yep.
But it does remind me of like the PTO. They're an outside organization that supports the schools and the students.
So they can do fundraisers, they can. And how they spend that money is entirely up to them. Typically what they pay for are things like their end-of-season banquet, any awards that they give at the banquet. Some of the groups have scholarships that they, they give to students at awards, senior awards night. They typically will do some sort of senior gift, whether that's a, a sweatshirt or a track suit or, or something like that. That tends to be fairly standard across the booster organizations and, and what they do. That said, the hockey boosters
Pay for ice time.
Do pay for ice time. I've asked the A.D. to make sure that it goes through the proper channels. That's a donation so that we can pay a program-related cost. They really should come here before you and, and donate that money for that earmark so that the community understands the support that you're getting, so that you can also thank them for their support of our program because without that support, I don't, I don't know that, that we would be able to, especially where we don't have a solo team. We don't have enough kids in Lunenburg wanting to play hockey that we could have our own hockey team. So the fact that, that they want to help so that these kids can have an opportunity to play, it's, it's really extraordinarily generous.
Why don't the other boosters do that? I mean, I know that they're independent, but it seems like the hockey boosters are doing something like really.
It's extraordinarily expensive.
From my experience, the, the hockey booster and the football booster are very, very well organized.
Okay.
And there's a lot of turnover in a lot of these boosters because parents, their kids graduate.
Sure.
But the, the hockey booster, they, they have a lot of fundraising that they do and football is the same. But the other boosters.
But it's also, I mean, if you, fortunately, my kid doesn't play hockey, but I have very good friends whose kids play hockey. You are, you talked about expense. You know what I mean? You're doing it from a very early age and you're conditioned to pay for ice and you're just shelling out a lot of money every year to play hockey. And, and it's extraordinarily expensive and there's just.
But like, my point was more like, not that the hockey parents shouldn't do it, but other people should do what they do. Because like, I know, I, I like the awards. Because like, I know, I I like the awards and the senior thing, but like, if it's between giving out sixteen fake wood plaques. Or, you know, running a sport, maybe that's what they should be doing, I don't know.
Well, so this is a part of this presentation too, is that the boosters are there to supplement, they're not there to pay for the sports. The school is responsible.
That's been the sort of dividing line, right? Like, if we're gonna run a program. We should be funding the program.
Okay.
Right? Um so in other words, we wouldn't look for the lacrosse team to, on the down low, buy some new nets for us and. Drop them off on the field.
Oh, no, no, no.
But we should be providing what's necessary to play and the. As far as I know, and I've had this conversation with the A D, the only fee that we are not paying. The only cost that we're not paying in order to run a program is the ice time.
Like batting cages are a great example, it's like it's not needed, but you can supplement and get a batting cage from the.
Which they're working on right now, I believe, for the baseball team.
For batting.
Yeah.
How much is the ice time?
I'll have to get a cost on that, but it is, it is a lot.
Parents are something else.
Two hundred dollars an hour.
They wake up at four A M and they don't mess around.
Yeah.
Alright, and then um facility rentals, some people are under the impression that the money. That we charge the Bengals for the facility rental funds our athletic program, it does not. The facility rental fees go into the facility revolving account. And we pay for, as an example, mowing, we contract out the mowing. Of the playing fields, the grass playing fields, because they have to be maintained to a certain uh spec for the for the different sports. Um. We have to pay custodians for the indoor basketball all winter. Um so the monies from the facility rental. Go into the facility revolving and pay to help defray some of the costs of maintaining. The facility for everyone's use. It does not go to any of our athletic programming.
Does it defray the cost, in your opinion, does it defray the cost of usage, are the facility fees?
We have to constantly review that, right? So every couple of years, we we look at it again. Uh because our our landscaping contract goes up.
Didn't somebody leave a fridge one time? I remember we had to deal with that in a policy subcommittee, that somebody left a fridge at the.
Um so back before we did all that we did with the snack shack. Um when I first got here, people would bring in refrigerators from home. Bring them into the snack shack and they'd use them and, oh, it's not working anymore, let's get another one. But they would leave the non-functioning one and it costs us to dispose of it.
But that's all stopped.
That's all stopped if if people are following policy.
Okay.
That that can't happen, we purchased the refrigeration for the snack shack. Honestly, it's our facility, we should be the ones maintaining.
Did the refrigeration and the upgrades to the snack shack come out of facilities revolving fund?
Yeah, that part we came out of there and we had a donation.
Yeah.
Um that was earmarked for for the upgrades there. Okay, and then lastly, there's been this question about the track and turf field. Um there is a Verizon antenna on one of the light poles out at the turf field. In the agreement, they they pay, they're leasing the pole essentially. Those monies go to the town and they are deposited into the athletic turf revolving account. That is not an account that we oversee, that is an account that the town oversees, but it's specifically for the turf. Um additionally. We budget forty five thousand in our school budget annually to make a payment to the town. To continue to pay off the balance of um what's owed on the turf. And the final turf payment will be made in twenty twenty eight. But the Verizon antenna money does not fund any of our programs.
So does that mean?
Really to pay the debt.
So does that mean the debt payment is thirty plus forty five K?
Yeah.
Hmm.
Oh my gosh.
And we're gonna have to install a new one in a few years.
Again, it'd be nice if it makes it to twenty twenty eight.
It's not going to.
But it's not going to, I know.
Which one's the turf field? I don't even know.
The big football field down back.
Oh, the one with the leaning fence?
Yes.
Oh, wonderful.
Yes. So that's, that's the basic overview, you know, there's ebb and flow in the actual dollar amounts for things. It depends on how many kids are playing any given year and um but but the gist of. Where monies come from, your fee, where does that go, what does it pay for, what does the budget pay for? What we budget doesn't fully pay for much. It partially pays and it's largely, our program is largely funded. Through the athletic revolving account, which is user fees and gates.
So I had it at two hundred eighty one thousand dollars is what it costs so far and we budgeted.
Ninety five.
Ninety five thousand plus forty thousand. So we're like, where's the gap?
The plus forty thousand is what?
For transportation.
That's that's in the budget, the ninety five thousand includes.
It's tax dollars in.
Yep. So the ninety five thousand in our budget includes forty thousand for transportation, but the transportation exceeds. Forty thousand to run all three three seasons.
So we budget way less.
Way less.
Like a third of what it costs.
If we had to pick up the full cost of running all of these sports.
We couldn't.
Huh.
Wow.
That's not good.
It's not self sustaining, but I also had a question, I guess.
It's not supposed to.
That is really the student organization self sustaining as well? Like, do the student fees actually pay for the stipends for all the advisors?
So the student activity fees, that that is the source of the advisor stipends for all the clubs and. You have to post the position to appoint someone to be the advisor. Um and we have to pay those stipends. And if you had a given year where only five kids wanted to do that, we're not gonna bring in enough. To pay the stipend.
Well, that's what I'm wondering, like, the question is, oh, no, sports aren't self sustaining, but I'm wondering if the student organizations are the same.
The activities that are done at the middle school. They have to figure out what the cost is per student and then they charge, most of them are around forty three, forty five dollars. The problem is, is that we've had great success with our um um Science Olympiad team, it's a huge team. Um but that, again, gets to busing costs and material costs. And when we get so many kids participating, same is true for any of our sports, right? If we have a track season where we've got sixty kids, we have to hire additional assistant coaches. So we went from one stipended position for Science Olympiad and the kids at the middle school loved it so much. They wanted it on the high school side too. We now have three advisor stipends to run our Science Olympiad, so.
That's a good problem to have.
It is a good problem to have.
And they kicked butt too, they they did great this year, they did fantastic.
Fantastic. So the the tough thing is, is that. It it gets, it gets really challenging um to offer all the different kinds of clubs at the at the high school level with class advisors and all of that. Um. I, without us across the board um activity fees that you can budget and count on.
Yeah.
Um it would become really challenging. Um and we may not be able to have all of the stipended roles that we have. Or certain types of stipended roles that are covered out of. That revolving account would have to be incorporated into the budget.
So I guess, I'd, to follow up on Brian's question. How, are we that much in the hole for student activities as we are in sports?
No, we're doing fine with the student activities, that's that's fine. Um it's in part because a lot of things slowed down during that hybrid COVID year. Um there were some, we still needed to have class advisors and all of that, but. Some of the the clubs that would be more in person and you can't really run them remote didn't run.
Right.
Um but we, right now anyway, we're we're in good shape with.
Okay.
That account.
Hey, any other questions about the athletic program funding?
I just want to um. Make sure though, just to zero in on a point that Tony just made. We're not in the hole, we're not running a deficit, we don't have a financial crisis in our athletic department. The the reason why this is important to talk about is really for transparency. Which is, sports are very popular in Lunenburg.
Mm hmm.
Roughly half of our kids in the high school participate in a sport of some kind over the course of the year. It's extremely expensive to run.
Yep.
And most of that expense. Is on the backs of the parents of those kids who are paying activity fees and gate fees. And participating in booster club uh fundraisers.
Yeah.
And that is what it is.
So costs, costs related to these programs go up too. What we have to pay the officials is not under our control. Um bus transportation goes up for athletic transportation too. Um. Cost of general materials and supplies and. At some point, we will be in a deficit in the revolving account. And at that point, if we're not. Gonna look at revisiting fees, we are going to have to start budgeting more.
Yeah.
Towards athletics in our budget.
Or cutting sports.
Yeah.
Okay.
If we're gonna be cutting sports, I do think we're gonna need to warn the public.
Oh, it's nothing, nothing eminent.
No, there's no decision that's been made, but I would take this meeting as. An F Y I that.
The notice.
This, this is something we will have to deal with down the road. Probably not terribly far down the road. Um because as you see, it's not, it's not like we. We have a big balance sitting in the revolving account. Um pretty, pretty much what what comes in goes back out.
Do you think it'll be next budget?
It depends on.
Assuming status quo. It's next budget.
Yeah.
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 There may need to be some adjustment next.
But I think, I think we gotta make sure that this is on blast because. The amount of feedback that we received when we even talked about cutting non-sports programs but sports related people was so. Intense.
Mm hmm.
That I think like. Nine fifteen on a Wednesday night is probably not sufficient notice to the public.
No, no, and that's why we're having these conversations so early, right? That it, we can. We can make some decisions ahead of a budget cycle. That way, these aren't all unknowns, will we raise a fee, won't we raise a fee? If we have these conversations ahead of that, all of this has been decided, it's off the table and now we're dealing with.
Other things.
You know, the regular budget cycle, I just, again, I wanted to be able to put all of this out. This originally was asked for for that very reason, it's just for information so that everybody understands what is paying for what, right? Um but again, you see the bigger picture here, it's information. And having information, you can make decisions, but again, the costs for programs are gonna continue to go up. And at some point, we won't be break even.
Right.
I'll give you a heads up if I can see that on the horizon. Uh right now, though, it's it's not like, you know, we're in a cushy spot.
Um we are gonna need to give people lots of warning though, I mean, I don't want anyone caught unaware, I want people to know. If we're not gonna fund the schools, we can't, we have to focus on the very basic services and. Things are gonna have to be let go and unfortunately.
This is a relevant segue to the next topic, which is.
It certainly is.
Precarious situation around not being able to offer the variety and diversity of services that we currently offer.
So I think this probably is a good time to segue into that, very well done, Mr. Beardmore. Um can we share?
Yeah, so could I?
Somehow?
Yeah. I I have the deck here that that we've been working against and I apologize to everybody for not putting this in the shared drive earlier. Carol and I met on this on Monday.
Okay.
And then we met again today um with the superintendent and a couple of members of her staff and um. I've continued to do some edits and probably will continue after tonight's meeting and tomorrow morning before they get submitted to the town manager. So um what I will uh share with you now is. Um a draft of the presentation that we will show at town meeting uh for the override. So if I could share my screen.
You should be able to.
Be able to, okay. And I will go into PowerPoint. Here we go. Alright.
Here we go.
Uh so this is uh intended to present to the folks who uh attend town meeting and an overview of. How we get to where we are, what the override funds and and what it's for. Um so first and foremost is that, you know, we want to make the point. That the Lunenburg schools should be a source of immense pride for our town. Um in their current capacity. Um just very recently, Lunenburg High School in U S News and World Reports. Um ranked in the eighty eighth percentile nationally.
That's pretty good.
The seventy fourth percentile in the state of Massachusetts. And in the eighty first percentile in the Worcester Metro region. Um we set a goal uh some time ago to hit eighty percent. At students testing at grade level in our grade school levels. Uh and we are tracking toward that goal right now. Uh based on iterative testing that occurs over the course of the year. Um and that assessment will be made in uh in June. And this is a quote out of the uh Desi accountability report for twenty twenty three, based on last year's M C A S scores that. Our district is making substantial progress toward targets on most of our accountability measures. And this is obviously all within the context of a school department, like every other school department, that has gone through. Uh challenges relating to student emotional health, COVID learning loss. Um and a variety of other headwinds, which we'll talk about throughout the report. Um so this next slide is really, you know, to talk about how we got to to where we are and the budget process with some numbers. Uh so the town manager's preliminary budget, which was proposed in February. was twenty-three thousand, five hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars and, uh, five hundred and twenty-two dollars. That represented a two-point-nine-four percent increase over our previous year. Um, but due to financial headwinds and expenses, which we'll talk about in an upcoming slide, would have been catastrophic. Uh, and would have amounted to over thirty full-time equivalent cuts in our school department. Fortunately, over a series of meetings and prolonged, and very prolonged discussions that we were all involved in, as was our chair and our superintendent, the town manager saw fit to add two-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand dollars, two-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand and twenty-five dollars in certified new growth funding. That was basically all of, I believe, our certified new growth this year. An additional forty-one thousand dollars, forty-one thousand, three hundred and sixty-one dollars. At some point, I'll be able to say a dollar amount correctly. Uh, practice before Saturday, uh, in local receipts.
It won't be nine-twenty at night.
Yeah, it's already past my. Uh, and a decision to not put fifty, an additional fifty thousand dollars in pavement management, but instead to spend that in the school department, which led to the town manager's now recommended budget, which we would hope by the time we get to Article Eight on Saturday, will have just been passed in the omnibus budget to the tune of twenty-three million, nine-hundred-and-one thousand, nine-hundred-and-eight dollars. Um, and, and so that is the, the omnibus budget, which is basically supported through taxpayer revenue under the proposition two and a half cap and Chapter Seventy funding. In addition to that, the select board saw fit to appropriate ARPA funds in the amount of two-hundred-and-twenty-one thousand, six-hundred-and-forty dollars. And that funds a mandatory network security upgrade, which we've been advised by our IT consultants is nondiscretionary. Uh, nine-one-one compliant phone systems, which is an unfunded state mandate that we have to comply with, which will basically enhance our ability to make emergency calls from classrooms or any location on our campus. And first responders will know where the call is coming from, is effectively what that does. Um, and seventy-five thousand, eight-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars in Chromebook, uh, purchases. That does not actually cover our total recurring Chromebook costs on an annual basis, but does supplement that for this year. These are one-time funds. Uh, they are, the, these, these funds are, will not be available. ARPA is basically expended as a, as a result of this. And so our total Lunenburg School District omnibus plus one-time spending as we are currently counting on going into Article Eight is twenty-four million, one-hundred-and-twenty-three thousand, five-hundred-and-ninety-eight dollars. Uh, and that has been our focus for the last six months. Building and supporting and, you know, effectively fighting and advocating for this budget. And that has really been my focus personally. As I said, coming into this, I've been skeptical of our ability to pass an override all along. And I've thought that it'd be at the, of absolute importance to get whatever support we can out of the, the omnibus budget. And, and that is where we sit today. Although still, two-hundred-and-twenty-one thousand dollars of that is non-recurring and does not support a basis for future years. So why can't we get to the same level of service in FY twenty-five for what we spent in FY twenty-four, plus a typical two and a half to three percent increase? And the answers here come down to increased utility costs, increases in bus transportation costs, increases in building maintenance costs, increases in outer district placement costs, unfunded state mandates, and increased health insurance cost. And I have made a deliberate decision not to burden people with charts and graphs and numbers. These have been the topics of dozens of hours of school committee time and finance committee time. Suffice to say, these costs are nondiscretionary costs. And as a result of that, they are leading to cuts that need to be made in the current budget. Uh, or cuts to services that need to be made if we continue to be supported by the current budget. The sunsetting escher costs are not part of this request. They've effectively been written out and they are not part of the override. They are, they are cuts. So what will the override fund? Basically, let's start with what are the cuts associated with the current omnibus budget? And here they are. These are, by the way, exactly what this committee approved as part of that letter. This is literally a clipping from that letter that we put out last week. And so what the override will essentially do is of these twenty-plus FTE equivalent cuts, take out about ten and a half FTE equivalent.
Oh, that was a good graphic.
Like that?
That was so good.
Can I, can I interrupt?
Sure.
I think we also listed the, the budget line items in that list. I don't know if that's in here.
Hang on, hang on.
Bear with me.
Hang on, he's got it done.
He's gonna hit a button more.
Just 'cause that was the list, I was like.
Bear with me. You're talking numbers and wonky stuff. Peter's got it. He's got it covered.
Go back and do that again.
But with this four-point-four percent budget, that is basically allowing us to retain ten-plus FTE positions, uh, or ten FTE positions and all of the part-time positions that were eliminated, uh, in the budget. Right? So that is the big part of the override, uh, are, are these ten positions. Now, the asterisk positions here that denote part-time positions, some of them are point five, some of them are point fours, some of them are point two fives. But the, the calculus basically brings this to, um, well over ten FTEs. Um, and then, uh, expense lines will also be restored, uh, funding classroom supplies, equipment and educational tools. And we will be getting into more detail in terms of what that means in some future slides. Additionally, the override covers two-hundred-and-forty-one thousand, six-hundred-and-forty dollars that is currently coming from ARPA to fund the E-nine-one-one system, IT security upgrades and Chromebooks. If the override passes, that ARPA money will be returned to the select board for appropriation. The thinking behind this approach is that it will ensure that the schools have a budget basis of support for facilities maintenance, one-time and unanticipated infrastructure costs in future years. In other words, an override passes this year, that money carries forward to future years. And we can count on that apportionment to cover those types of costs in out years. Because frankly, this year, we have no wiggle room in a lot of areas and, and we'll talk about that. So what is this going to cost? The override at nine-hundred-and-forty-eight thousand, one-hundred-and-thirty-six dollars will add, we estimate, based on the finance committee's report, which will be made available, which is available right now on the town website and which will be made available at town meeting, for the average residential property, which today, with the FY twenty-four assessments, which were reflected in your Q-four tax bills that came out a couple of weeks ago. The average residential property is assessed at four-hundred-and-eighty-one thousand, four-hundred-and-seventeen dollars. That tax bill for the current fiscal year is six-hundred-and-seven, six-thousand, seven-hundred-and-eighty-eight dollars. You have just voted, if you, if we pass the omnibus budget, to add a hundred and twenty dollars to your tax bill, if you have that average residential property. So that is the two and a half percent increase that's part of that omnibus that we have just voted to raise and appropriate. The override will add an additional nine-hundred-and-forty-eight thousand dollars to our capped tax rate, which will bring that one-hundred-and-twenty dollars to three-hundred-and-eighteen dollars. And so the difference between three-eighteen and one-twenty is a hundred and ninety-eight dollars. It's that delta. So if you live in a million-dollar property or a million, fifty-thousand-dollar property, you can just do the math based on your property value. It would be six-hundred-and-ninety-three minus two-hundred-and-sixty-three or roughly four-hundred-and-thirty dollars. Uh, depending upon, again, the, the value of your property. And, um, if anybody would like me to stand there and do math, I'd be happy to do it. But I would assume that people would prefer me to drive on in the presentation.
I would assume.
Don't offer that.
Okay. Noted. Further discussion. We have gained momentum in the Lunenburg schools. We're making measurable progress against measurable headwinds caused by demographic changes in our town, youth mental health crisis and COVID learning loss. Our MCAS scores, our I-ready scores are all showing improvements that are the result of strategic decisions that the administration and the school committee has made, execution and investments that have been made in our town. We have numerous facilities projects and a growing high-six-figure punch list. But this is part of the momentum and the initiative that the school committee has taken to address the needs of the town, of the schools. Yes, sir.
Can I just make a comment?
Yep.
I think that we should make it clear that the MCAS and I-ready scores are because of improvements made by the administration. We set the policy, but we don't really do any of the work. I think we should give.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I think that's fair. Yep. But I, I do.
And her team and the teachers the credit.
So I, point taken, however.
But it's because the school committee supports the strategic plan and allocates the financial resources to execute.
In this case, it needs to be the financial resources are the reason.
Well, I also think though, that we are presenting here as a school committee that is making a recommendation to the town based on our analysis of the data available. But also, we do have a track record of making strategic and policy decisions that are driving positive results. And we are proposing that we continue to do that. And so I, I, I do think that it's not, it's, it's, it's the faculty and administration, absolutely. It's the school committee and our fostership of this. But just as importantly, it's the town and its continued investment in our schools. And I think it all, we need to say all of that.
I guess my point is, I want the town to understand what it is that their money gets. And their money gets a group of teachers that are far above average.
Okay, so we're gonna get to that.
Okay, all right, okay, all right, all right.
Just like Brian, you're getting ahead.
Okay, sorry.
We're gonna get to that.
One of the arguments I hear against the override is Lunenburg teachers are great. They don't need more money. They'll just keep doing more with less.
We're gonna talk about that too.
They've been doing forever. So I don't wanna, I don't wanna put fuel on that fire by saying.
Yep. You're, and you're, I mean, obviously we're in violent agreement here, but. We have made high-value investments. Today, Lunenburg is in the bottom twelve percent in Massachusetts in per pupil spending, but above average in state achievement and accountability ratings and top third as calculated in national rankings that we talked about in the opening slide. We are making investments where they matter. We are continuing to invest in high-quality curriculum materials and professional development through grant and local funding. We have a most qualified hiring practice. We hire the most qualified applicants and we don't hire when there are not qualified applicants. And we focus on the skills, confidence and passion for lifelong learning for all of our students. The point here that I want to make on this last bullet is that it isn't just about the MCAS and the I-ready test. It is the whole student. It is what they are able to learn about citizenship, what they are able to learn about art, what they are able to learn about their bodies and taking care of themselves and athletics and participation in their community. And all of those things are what we are focused on and are honestly at some risk in losing through lost momentum and declining achievement. We are at a risk of less focused intervention on instruction and on individual students. We are at risk of reduced instructional materials that are aligned with the curriculum that is now proving to have positive results. We will have fewer classroom materials. And as a result, that burden is very often shifted onto teachers and staff. And those cuts for this year are non-sustainable. We are burning down our supplies and really would not be able to function in twenty-six at that level. We have an uns, we have unsustainable facilities maintenance. We are already seeing the age of our twenty-year-old primary school and our eight-year-old middle high school. And we are seeing unanticipated needs that have to be addressed now. We have realized programmatically into the future and we need to be able to financially support that. We lack, again, the ability to address unanticipated costs. We have no room. There's no wiggle room in this budget. But here's the biggest one. And I, I think, you know, back to my opening public comment here tonight about, you know, one teacher of many that profoundly influenced my life. I want to hire more Dawn Adams. And I don't want to have that headwind when it comes to hiring and retaining the staff that is proving time and time again to deliver these results. So the next steps. Vote today. Vote in two weeks. Assuming that the override passes, which is admittedly a big assumption, uh, we will need to meet again at a special town meeting to appropriate these funds. And that is basically the final slide, which will open to public discussion.
That was great. That was great. Peter?
You did a good job, Peter.
Thank you.
You crushed it. Your explanation, the numbers, the animations, the transition from side to side, it was phenomenal. It was great. Carol, I know you're gonna be on stage. You have got to use the trees line. You, Peter brings the, Peter brings the number, you bring moral obligation.
Oh, I, I guess. I will, I will bring moral obligation.
That is where you should.
So let me, so, so let me just give a little bit of context. So Carol and I will meet again on Friday and we kind of need to do some rehearsal and figure out talking points. I have a whole bunch of additional context, bulleted stuff, Q and A stuff. Like there's a lot more preparation that actually still needs to go into this, as well as Carol and I do need to figure out how to divide and conquer, how to, how she can keep me from getting into trouble, like those, those kinds of things. Um, so, so there is, there is work to do. We did and have talked about, and I have notes here for one potential additional slide, which came out of a conversation this afternoon around, you know, should we show at a high level what the impacts are likely to be to students in each individual school? And the thinking be, being here that we are asking parents to come to this meeting and vote. They may have gotten a notice from the superintendent or seen it in the ledger or the sentinel or something like that, but are probably not following this on a meeting-to-meeting basis. Do we need to bring something a little bit more personal for, you know, uh, Mrs. Smith's fourth grader who may not really understand what any of these cuts actually mean for her fourth grader? And so we gotta kind of work that through in the next twelve hours probably, uh, to figure out if that slide is gonna hit or if we're just gonna do it through, um, verbal commentary.
Verbally.
Yeah. Yeah.
Or we can do it on slide, Brian?
Yeah, thank you. I think that was great. Uh, just a few comments. I think that was great, just a few comments in regards to what you just talked about. I think you could potentially hit it up when you talk about all the staff and that section of staff.
Yep.
Here's all the high school, here's all the middle school, here's Turkey Hill, and then the budget line items. You could obviously hit up everybody there. The slide that had additionally, I don't know if you still have it up.
Yep.
But the additionally slide, I thought it might be a good idea to mention how the Chromebooks are also that recurring cost.
Yep.
I felt like that wasn't hit in there as much.
Not only is it not a recurring cost, next year, we have to, we have to get to the baseline. We have to add the 75 in that we lost and then increase it.
So, that might be something.
I'll try to, I don't know if I want to add wording to this or just add commentary, but I...
It was in that one-time, unanticipated, infrastructure, yeah, you mentioned infrastructure costs, but I'm like, I want to get that Chromebook in there somewhere, because you had said it in that top line, but...
Yeah, so here's where, here's where it goes. In budget basis and support for recurring costs.
Yeah, like Chromebooks are recurring costs, prices Chromebooks, something like that.
Something like that.
That's what I was thinking, something.
Yep.
In fact, feel free to...
It was, it was part of my thinking on infrastructure, but I, you're right, it should be stipulated, because there is absolutely a recurring cost as part of that.
Yeah, and that's huge, so...
I don't think, I have a few more, sorry. And then, I don't know if you guys could discuss this, too, or we could discuss it, too, but people are gonna bring up, oh, just charge more fees to the kids, and it's just, it's not sustainable, but I don't know how much you want to address.
That might be a Q and A.
That's the Q and A thing that people add.
That might be a Q and A issue. I don't know that I'd want to, I may not want to introduce that idea if it doesn't come out.
They're not gonna queue, they're just gonna rant.
I think it's coming. I mean, I think it's coming, and we'll have to be thoughtful about what we respond to and what we don't respond to, but also, you know, I mean, we're informed by the discussions that we've had, and, you know, budget is part of a process, and we're at the point in the process where the budget is the budget. And, and what we are proposing, we are being very specific in terms of what that is going to support.
And it's also closely budgeted.
Yeah.
Yeah, spelled out.
And then, the last one I had, and this was more of a process thing, I didn't know if it was correct enough, but the second to last slide, I think it was, it was asking about appropriating the funds.
Yes.
Having a special town meeting. I didn't know if this, I thought this town meeting was appropriating it, and then...
No, or not. So, so this was a deliberate discussion that went on the part of the Finance Committee and the Select Board, and to a lesser extent, us. So, we voted, if you recall, I was the dissenting vote, on a budget that was based on that budget number that I showed that is not inclusive of the override. And that carried through into the omnibus budget, and that is the appropriated budget for this town meeting. There are a couple of different ways to do an override. One is, we could have brought forth an unbalanced budget and then just said, we will address that if the override doesn't pass, and the money would be already appropriated. As a town, our committee, the Finance Committee, the Select Board, we chose not to do it that way, but that does mean that if the override passes, a special town meeting will have to be called to appropriate that money, and we are gonna be in a position this summer where we'll have to figure out, based on the timing, you know, do we run unbalanced for a month or two, or like, you know, based on whether that, you know, special town meeting can be brought into August, and do we post positions, like, that, those are all things that we're gonna have to work through, but I'm pretty confident that we can.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. I would, it was great.
Thank you.
You should be in sales.
I am.
I know. So, I would like to see one slide, what it means if the override doesn't pass, specifically things like the class sizes at the high school, class choices at the high school, the mental health support, buildings going unrepaired, dirty buildings, grass unmoed, maintenance not being done. I like, I really would like a slide that drives home. You are not going to have a school...
You will not be happy.
We will not have a school system you can be proud of if this override doesn't pass.
Carol has put together the beginnings of that slide, and I think over the next 12-ish hours, we can put that together.
Yeah. So, yep, that was the only thing that was kind of missing was the, because it was, it was very factual, it was great, but it's just missing that, well, then why should we vote for it?
This was a delicate balance between facts and emotion and brevity.
Because we had a lot of facts from, from Annika, a lot of charts and, you know, but that's overkill, I, I don't think.
It's, they're hard to follow.
They're hard to follow, and you can make numbers say anything.
Yeah, I think it's good to connect the positions that are cut to the actual events that will happen, so I like that. Okay, this is, the class sizes are gonna increase because we cut these teachers.
Oldest.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. So, we can, okay? Are we okay with this then, with the addition of that slide?
Yes.
Yes, I'm good.
Yes, please.
Right. Thank you very much for your support, and thank you, Carol and Dr. Burnham.
Yeah, and Carol, I think you need to do the emotional bit a little bit.
I will, the trees, okay, the trees.
You're a teacher. You have, you're a teacher, like, he's a salesman, and you have, you have this emotional power. Use it. Shame us a little bit into doing the right thing.
We will use that, we will use that. He's the number guy, I'm the...
Moral authority.
Educated guy. There you go. We'll, we'll work on that. That's Friday morning's job, but we'll, I'll figure out something on the slide and send it to you, and then tomorrow morning, you can send it back.
I have talked to Carol more this week than I've talked to my wife.
Yeah. Steve says you're going again. I'm like, yeah, yeah.
Outside of the presentation, I did want to ask, is there gonna be a handout?
The override statement.
The override statement handout will be available. Great.
So, I did have a parent reach out to me this week and ask, or suggest, that we put out another reminder similar to the one that we did a week or two ago on tomorrow or Friday.
Yep, the plan was to send that out. We debated about how you need to have a little lead time to be able to plan, but if we send it too early, people lose track, and it's... We intend to send out the one-page menu for what would be available for lunch, as well as provide that additional information around the cost, it's cash, it's only available between 11:00 and 1:00, and that supervision of children will be provided through the National Honor Society students and our Student Council students in the library between the hours of 9:00 and 3:00, so that folks have that information ahead of time. And again, we'll remind them that meeting starts at 9:00. I can let them know that there, there is a plan for overflow.
I wonder if you might, I don't know if you can at this point, but make it 8:30 because of what Tim was saying about everybody showing up at 9 o'clock.
Or just say, show up early to get registered, because we need to check in.
So, the kids, the high school kids will be there earlier than 9:00. My concern is if I say 8:30 and parents arrive at 8:30 and the kids aren't quite ready yet.
The kids can stay with their parents for...
You know what I mean?
Just say arrive. Plan on arriving early.
They'll be, the kids will be there so that folks can get themselves into the auditorium in time.
Registration is gonna be a thing.
It's gonna be a thing, and it's very prescribed. If you have someone with you that is not a voter, I don't think they'll be allowed in the auditorium. You'll have to go to the overflow.
You get a visitor badge, yeah.
They're, they're gonna...
Well, that's not...
Oh, because of the numbers?
Because of the numbers. So, if, if, if you went with, Evan uses an example, his 12-year-old and his eight-year-old, his 12-year-old might want to speak up.
Yeah.
Where the eight-year-old needs to go to daycare, so they said, well, you would have to have the 12-year-old go to the overflow because of the clicker situation. They, they can't take up the seat of a clicker. So, I don't know, just, that's...
From what I gathered from watching last night, a tremendous amount of thought and planning has gone into this one.
Absolutely.
So, God bless them.
They've really tried to come up with every possible scenario.
And we've been testing...
We've been testing things from here to eternity.
For two weeks.
So, okay. If that's it on the override, anybody with a report, or do we want to skip that due to the time and that we still have executive session?
Yes, let's skip that.
All right, we will skip that. Topics for future discussion, I think we're pretty well set on that, unless anybody has something else that we didn't mention.
Would be a good, good topic to discuss, our meetings after the election.
Yeah, what, what we're gonna do, and when the reorg is, and when the...
Could you, Carol or Dr. Burnham, I'm just thinking, just thinking aloud here, so just bear with me. I am increasingly concerned about the superintendent's evaluation based on the complexity of the process and the timing and all that sort of thing, so if you could just kind of give us some sort of written, like, here's the game plan, I think that would be helpful, because I'm starting to get, and I don't want to discuss it tonight other than to express my anxiety.
No, no, I can't do anything until after all this is...
Right, yep.
I'm sorry.
Yep.
But, but for the next meeting, I'll have, I have to have this by such and such a date. You better get on it.
Or even if you could put in an email or something, just to...
I think a schedule email is all right.
Two dates, yeah, because I'm...
Yes, let me get to Saturday, and then, okay. So, then I would look for a motion to adjourn into executive session, not to come back to general session again.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
To executive session.
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.